Good morning and welcome to CDBG Advisory Committee Meeting for February 24, 2013. Roll call please.
Committee members, Armenian.
Present.
Mark Karian.
Present.
Olivares is absent. Taschen.
Ramirez.
The agenda for the February 24, 2014 meeting of the CDBG Advisory Committee was posted on or before Thursday, February 20, 2014, at 8:00 a.m. on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item 2 Minutes. Minutes of the February 21, 2014 CDBG Advisory Committee Meeting are unavailable. Item 3. I'm sorry?
Go ahead, please.
Item 3, Oral Communications. I don't have any cards. Item 4, Business Agenda. A reports information only. At 1, receive report from Director of Community Services and Parks.
Vice Chair Mark Karian, members of the CDBG Advisory Committee. This agenda item is here in the event that we have any follow-up matters to discuss from last Friday's meeting or to expand on anything that was covered on last Friday. I don't have anything to report except to let you know that we did provide you with a copy of the program planning calendar, which is the target dates for the rest of the process, including the proposed date for the City Council meeting, the public hearing, when the recommendations will be published in the newspaper, et cetera. Other than that, unless the committee members have any follow-up items or would like to expand on anything that we talked about on Friday, that's my reporting.
Do we have any comments, questions?
I have a question. Will that calendar be provided to the applicants as well?
Yes, the applications are, I'm sorry, the planning schedules always provided to the applicants as far as the critical dates, which are the public hearing, publication, and the council meeting. But we'll, as soon as the day is over, we'll send out a reminder of all that.
Yes, and in addition, we do email, we have an email list, and we do send emails to each of the applicants, in addition to agencies that have received CDBG funds in the past, so they'll know about all the meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 482, receive report and presentation on fiscal year 2014-15, pre-designated city capital neighborhood improvement projects.
Yeah, we have presenters here.
Yes, the City of Glendale Community Development Code Enforcement Program.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Tim Foy. I'm the Deputy Director for Planning and Neighborhood Services in the Community Development Department. I don't really have a formal presentation with a PowerPoint for you today, but I thought to talk a little bit about our code enforcement activities that the CDBG monies fund. We have a staff of about eight full-time inspectors and field representatives in the city, and the use of the CDBG funds allows us to concentrate a lot of our resources in the southern part of the city where there's just a lot of need for the kind of code enforcement work that we do. In general, our code enforcement work is focused on enforcing the city's building and zoning and maintenance codes, as well as housing. There are certain minimum standards that property owners have to maintain. The general topics include things like illegal use of properties, unkept yards, smoking. The things that are probably most important to the very immediate quality of life for residents in South Glendale are the amount of inspections we do on housing quality issues, and especially helping tenants get compliance from their landlords, helping landlords and tenants resolve their disputes over maintenance issues. There is an awful lot of trash and debris left in the public right-of-way, unfortunately, all throughout the city, but especially in Southern Glendale where the properties are developed more densely. And, you know, unfortunately, I think there's just kind of a change in our culture across the United States and Glendale, and Glendale as well as other places, that people just kind of leave trash out a lot and expect someone else to pick it up. And I know what happens in my neighborhood in Los Angeles, people will just, it's so odd, they'll take their McDonald's bag and put everything in it very neatly and just set it outside the car and drive away. So we do a lot of large item pickup, small item pickup. Some of our guys function almost as garbage men, really. A surprising amount of their time is devoted to that. And another important thing that we do through our staff, and it's not directly called out in this budget, but our, that our Neighborhood Services Division does, is graffiti control. And we, Glendale's had a pretty successful program on that. We have someone who works virtually full-time on that, more than one person who works full-time on that. And sometimes we can get contracts with property owners to, they'll pay us a fee, and then we will paint out their graffiti whenever their properties are struck, or sometimes we'll do things on a one-time basis. The guy who principally does it has been doing it for a long time. He's very dedicated to it. He's told me his sister will call him on the cell phone and harass him about spots that he's missed. It's, I think it's a program that works really well, well worth the money. And kind of an analogous program is just general, cleaning up the public right-of-ways aside from the trash. We do a lot of pulling up weeds and making sure that the medians in the street don't get over, not the medians in the center of the street, but the parkways along, between the sidewalk and the curb, don't get overgrown. And that person who does that also offers those sorts of services to private property owners who have difficult hillside lots to clear. So that's kind of an overview of our program. We have, our staff is evenly divided between what we call code compliance officers who have training in housing and building codes, as well as another, a lower level called the field reps, who do a lot of the fiscal activities, as well as enforce some of the minor codes like brown lawns and...
Very nice. Thank you. Any comments, questions?
I have a few questions. Just to clarify, I think for the benefit of the public, we call these, the funds provided to these programs as pre-designated. I think it would be helpful, just for the record, if you could explain, Mr. Duran, who pre-designates it and why and how the amounts are determined?
Thank you. Collier Markaran, members of the CDBG Advisory Committee. There are primarily three funding source activities with the HUD CDBG funds. Funds are appropriated for program planning or administration, and we are capped at 20% of our entitlement to use for planning and management. We are allowed to use 15% of our entitlement funds for public social services. Then the third major funding category is capital improvement projects, where we are allowed to expend 65% of our entitlement on capital improvement projects. And any funds that for any reason are reprogrammed or surplus can only be recycled for capital improvement projects and not the other two funding categories being administration and social services, which is unfortunate because there's such a big need and high demand for social service programs. And then what the City Council does is every November, we will make a report to the City Council, and we will outline the funding plan for the ensuing year. And we will identify all of the current year projects and then the funding limitations or proposed appropriations for those three funding categories. And then within the capital improvement program, a funding category, we will list out what historically have been the City Council's highest priorities. And for the last several years, their highest priorities have been to fund one park project in Southern Glendale, to fund the Southern Glendale Code Enforcement Program. And up until a couple of years ago, when we had a lot more funding to work with, we used to fund public works projects, which were deemed to be the City Council's highest priorities. For the 14-15 CDBG plan, the City Council again pre-designated Southern Glendale Code Enforcement and the Palmer Park Project as pre-approved capital improvement projects. So those two projects are not part of the RFP, which goes out to the rest of the community for the use of capital improvement funds. However, the City Council and the CDBG Advisory Committee do request that even the pre-designated projects make a presentation to the committee so that you can get an idea of the context, how those projects fit in the overall strategy for the use of CDBG funds. And then the other thing to note about the city's priorities and the pre-designated funds, as you all know, any capital improvement projects have to be performed in Southern Glendale or low and moderate income census tracts. So the code enforcement program is an ideal CDBG project because it focuses on Southern Glendale code enforcement, which we otherwise would not be able to do with general funds because there aren't enough general funds to go around. Now it would be a very passive code enforcement program. And code enforcement leads to quality housing, and it leads to quality housing for low-income residents, to make sure that we are after landlords, that they maintain quality housing. Just because their apartment building is in Southern Glendale, and they run primary to low-income persons, it doesn't mean that they can't maintain the same quality that we find in other parts of the city. It's also an important component of an overall neighborhood revitalization strategy, which again needs to be targeted in Southern Glendale. So that's what the code enforcement program does. Then the park project, again, because we are not flush with capital improvement funds, all of the parks south of Colorado are eligible for CDBG funds. So the City Council decided several years ago that as it relates to Southern Glendale parks, it makes sense to use the CDBG funds, and for non-Southern Glendale parks, of course, they would use other funding sources. So that's why we're funding the Palmer Park Project with CDBG.
Great. So as a follow-up, so HUD designates funds for certain types of things. Mr. Foy, you outlined many things that you do in code enforcement. Are all those activities qualified for the HUD funding, or is it specific types of activities? Because you mentioned housing disputes to McDonald's trash bags. So I was just wondering whether, I know you were trying to cover everything that you do, but which parts are the parts that the actual HUD funding, funds?
Hi, my name's John Bernal. I'm the principal supervisor for code compliance. No, the CDBG funds are very limited in what they can be used for. Such as the items as Mr. Foy had mentioned with regards to graffiti removal and trash abatement, those are not covered by these funds. These funds are specifically to improve housing conditions, property conditions on residential properties. So we do have a program where we sort of focus the staff to do those type of activities. And as Mr. Foy had mentioned, is we do have both code compliance inspectors as well as field representatives. And not all those positions are paid 100% out of these funds. We do have to augment them with city's general funds. That gives us a little bit more flexibility on the type of activities we do with the staff, but they are, again, really focused with housing, habitability, and quality issues specifically.
Okay. And then, so with all the other funding decisions that we make, you know, we ask applicants for measurement of impact of their programs, such as what we did Friday with social service programs. Does HUD require that sort of measurement of impact with these funds or no?
We do have quarterly reports that we have to prepare to the CDBG staff on outcomes. So we do set goals on an annual basis on outcomes in three different areas, both inspections, the number of cases we start, and the number of cases we clear. And I believe over, you know, the past several years, we've met those outcomes on what we do. But we do have those outcomes that we use as goals to reach.
Great. Thank you very much. I'd love to see, I know I'm new to the game, so I apologize if these questions are repetitive from previous years. I appreciate your indulging my questions. I would, if staff could share past reports or maybe future reports as the work is done, I would be interested in just becoming more knowledgeable about the work and the outcomes.
And I'd like to offer an open invitation to any of you committee members. If you'd like to take ride-alongs with any of my staff to at least see the type of work that they do, please contact us and we can set those up.
Yeah, I would love to do that. Thank you very much.
That's an excellent suggestion.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Ramirez?
Well, I just kind of want to follow up on, I think with Mr. Armenian saying that, this is Armenian, yeah. Regarding the funding, and not so much the outcomes, but the city allocates code enforcement funding for all of Glendale.
Correct.
And so these funds are supplemental funds.
Correct.
Okay. And I think, I asked this question before when you came. At the community assessment meeting, one of the big concerns expressed was that there was not enough inspectors out there. And I think it was, we were told that, well, it goes by neighborhood. But I was wondering, how many code compliance officers do you have?
I have four code compliance inspectors and four field representatives.
And four. And they cover the whole city?
No. Because of the funding restrictions with CDBG, those inspectors that are paid from this fund are restricted to the southern portion of the city. So if you, if you would see, if I would have brought a copy of one of our enforcement area maps, you would see by that map that actually we provide a lot more service to the southern portion of the city than we do for the rest of the city, just because of the funding restrictions and limitations that we have. So by receiving these funds, the southern portion of the city does get quite a bit more attention than the rest of the city does. And indeed, it does require that much more.
And that's in addition to what city's enforcement officers?
Correct.
So if you have four compliance officers and four field officers out there funded by these funds, yes?
No.
No.
But we have, funded by these funds, we have 1.5 inspectors that are funded by these funds.
Okay.
And roughly 1.5 field representatives that are funded by these funds.
Okay.
If you're, as you are all aware, familiar with the city, basically above Colorado, all the way up to the north, I have two inspectors and two field representatives. The CDBG eligible areas that generally are from Colorado south, I have two inspectors and two field representatives. Now out of that, I have one inspector and one rep that's budgeted 50/50 with CDBG and general funds. So if you look at, if you were looking at the map, you can see how much really is emphasized on the southern portion of the city compared to the rest of the city. It's out of balance.
Because of that funding and because of the need?
Because of the CDBG funds that we receive, we could provide that additional service down in the southern portion of the city.
And the increased need.
Correct. Correct. But if you like a map, I can also shoot you guys all a copy of a map so you can sort of get that visual.
I would love to see one.
So the trash, the trash removal is not part of this funding?
Correct. The trash removal...
And the graffiti?
Yeah, all the right-of-way enforcement dealing with trash removal and abatement, and the graffiti removal is not part of this program.
Okay, all right. That answers my questions, I think.
One quick question.
Sure.
Thank you, Vice Chair. The 376,000 that's been pre-designated, do you have, or can you summarize a breakdown of where that money is going?
Sure. I'm lucky I brought a copy of the budget with me here.
Excuse me, Vice Chair Markaran, if I may, we actually have copies of the CDBG budget in relation to the overall citywide budget for code enforcement. So it's okay with you, I can, I'll go ahead and hand them out?
Yes, please.
That's correct. Now, along with that budget, of course, there's admin positions that are covered as part of that. Well, they're just not all field staff.
Plus a lawyer. You always need a lawyer.
It's always good to have.
And you'd do without?
So there's 10% funding for the deputy city attorney through CDBG funds? Is that what this indicates?
I think roughly that's what the percentage is.
And that most of it is going towards inspectors and field reps?
Inspectors, correct. I mean, we try to do our best to address issues with property owners without going through a legal process. It just seems to be a better way of doing business per se. But we do have those few that, you know, we exhaust our administrative remedies to try to resolve those, and unfortunately, we do have to utilize an attorney to sort of...
Have them take down the tents, huh?
It's not tents, you know, again, it's, you know, today's times are not the easiest, you know, especially with property owners trying to address violations of housing regulations and that, because a lot of those things take a lot of money, you know? It's, you know, roofs, paint, carpet, plumbing fixtures, and all those things. So for us, it has been a little bit more difficult to try to gain compliance with property owners, just because from a financial standpoint, it's a lot tougher. So we've been working with them a little bit more than we have in the past, just knowing that sometimes funds are short, but also putting the tenant's needs out there as well. So it's trying to balance those things. And a lot of times, our compliance times aren't as quick as they used to have been. You know, it probably takes us twice as long now to get things remedied, just because of the reductions in resources that not only city has, but of course, property owners have as well, so...
And in most of these cases, you're talking about landlords?
Correct. Well, and even property owners, too.
Yeah.
We have a lot of property owners that we've been dealing with that are, you know, are living month to month, trying to just, you know, survive out there, and they have significant issues on their properties. With redevelopment funds have disappeared, and all those potential programs that were connected with that, with rehab loans and things like that, those things just don't exist like they did before. So we're trying to be a little bit more understanding with property owners on maintaining their progress.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure, please.
So in terms of residents of South Glendale, if they're seeing problems, how do they know to call you and contact you for addressing, like, how do they know what you address and how to access your services for their benefit?
You know, I've been here for about 21 years or so, and I think the program's been running since Mr. Engel first was brought on board to initiate the program back in late '80s. People are very aware of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance. You know, we have a lot of things that we put out on Channel 6. We have a lot of flyers that go out. We have a really good public participation and education program. The guys I have here have been here for a very long time, too, so they're very familiar with people within the community. We work with the police department really closely on issues. My graffiti guy has been here for a long time and is very efficient in what he does and knows a lot of people also within the community. And a lot of my staff also work in the community, too, or live in the community and that. So with all those things, people are very familiar of who to contact. You know, again, is, most of our complaints that come in aren't really proactive but are reactive. I'd say probably about 90% now are reactive complaints. And the only difficulty for us has been is the expedience on getting out there, of course, with the limited resources that we have, is, you know, is trying to get out there in a proper response time and that. Southern Glendale is not as significant as the rest of the city, and some of the pressures or the things you may hear may be from those people that are outside of that particular area because the coverage or the service areas per inspector is much greater.
Well, may I, Vice Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. On September 26th, when we had the Action Plan Public Hearing, we had 52 participants, and most of the complaints, of course, there was a variety of complaints, but most of the complaints dealt with increased code enforcement activities, exterior maintenance that needed, that was needed, affordable rents, more neighborhood cleanup in Southern Glendale, street cleaning and trash on same-day inconvenience. But there was a variety of complaints. Besides what you're doing with code enforcement, what other avenues are available to address these issues?
Well, with regards to, I think, as Mr. Foy had mentioned, bulky item is probably one of the largest problems we've had, you know, out in this community for a very long time. And at council meetings, you hear Mrs. Hammond always repeat the bulky item number, but as much as we, you know, Mrs. Hammond does that type of activity, as much as we put stuff up on Channel 6, we provide notifications, it still becomes a, I think, a community problem where people...
One suggestion was we need more trash bins. Someone was complaining about a lot of trash and cigarette butts on the streets and in parks.
Trash bins may be the answer, but then you'll get those from other people in the community, say, well, we now have too many trash bins because they're out on the street all the time.
In a place to bark.
Right. It becomes an aesthetic problem, and especially when these bins get larger, there's nowhere to put them. We deal in code enforcement, my field reps deal with that constantly, about people leaving the trash bins out there on a continual basis and that. But I think it's a large problem that many departments are addressing, not only code enforcement from our aspect, but I believe from the Public Works Department, their Integrated Waste Department, try to educate people with regards to the pickup, it's free, there is no charge for it, you just need to call and get it done. But, yeah, like I said, again, it's always an ongoing thing. When we're out there picking these items up, we're not only just picking them up, we're knocking on the door and trying to figure out where it's coming from to let people know that there are these additional programs. In our mailings we send out, we sent out those mailings as well, as, hey, there's these other programs available to get rid of these type of items. Cigarette program, we have, as part of community development, we have stations that people can adopt and put up to be able to put out these cigarettes. They're small little metal boxes that we have, and we put out in key locations, and those type of things. And then we put the stuff on channel, again, Channel 6. And then when we attend community meetings, a lot of those things are also stressed as well, so...
You do have a representative attending the community meetings regularly to just hear the public concerns and...
Yes. Moises usually sends us an invite to those, and whatever the inspector and the field rep in that area is, they attend those meetings to hear those things. And they usually bring their pad of paper and note all these things down so they can follow up on them.
How often are these meetings?
The CDBG meetings, usually you do them, what, two, three times a year? We attend those.
Besides that, there's other...
Whenever we get an invite from the Neighborhood Association meetings, we go. A lot of ti, we don't go on our own, just because sometimes they don't like us there. They want us, they want to be invited, or they want to invite us, is what they want us to be there. But... But it depends. I would say, oh, probably a half a dozen meetings a year that we're invited to. And now, this year, we're working a lot closer with the police department. So we'll be working, going to those business association meetings as well. Again, we don't like to be in there or attend these meetings unannounced because a lot of times they want to be able to invite us rather than just to show up on our own accord.
I just wanted to make a comment. I do think on the bulky item pickup issue, there is a communication challenge. Because on streets where I've been, that I frequent often in South Glendale, I will often notice that a bulky item will sit there and sit there, sit there until I snap a picture on the MyGlendale app, and then two days later, it's gone. So I do think that there's a lack of knowledge or a language barrier with residents on how to get that stuff picked up. They think they put it out there, someone will come by at some point and pick it up.
It disappears, right?
Right.
You know, we try to provide a lot of our literature and that in multi-language's. I believe that the Integrated Waste Department does too. I think for the most part, again, it's just like you were saying, is they put it out on the curb and all of a sudden, two days later, it's gone, you know. And I think a lot of residents take that position on it, you know. They don't want to spend the time, you have to call up. Because you just can't leave it at call up and then just put it out there. You can, through the Integrated Waste Department, they want you to hold on to it until the specific day on pickup. And a lot of times, they don't do that. They just put it out there. They want to get it out there. And you see a lot of the increases are around the holidays, of course, and tax time. People are getting their taxes back and getting new insurance, so. Fortunately, it's just, I think, the way society is today, disposable society where, you know, they don't... It's easier just to throw away and buy something new rather than...
Just an observation. Is that Glendale app working good?
We get things through that all the time. It goes not directly to us, but it goes in and around then to us. A lot of the bulky items, it sort of worked two ways. If it's something that's sitting on the curb, out of the street, you know, out of pedestrian travel, if we get it, we call Integrated Waste to schedule a pickup. But if it's something where it's a safety issue, then my guys go right out and pick it up. Four of my guys drive three-quarter ton pickup trucks with Tommy lifts on the back. So they're loading that stuff constantly. And we have three bins on a public works lot that we fill every week. Not just furniture, but shopping carts, everything and anything you can think of is that they're picking up, so. Like Mr. Foy was saying too, is the field reps do, you know, that's part of what they do is picking those items up.
It's a great, it's a great app. I know I'm a frequent flyer on it.
And it's not only for bulky items, it's, you know, it's other things too. Any code enforcement related stuff, those things could be sent to us as well, follow up on those too.
Thank you very much.
But again, is that open invitation? Just give us, give myself a call or Tim a call, we'll schedule it up. You can either without, with the inspectors or with the field representatives so you can get a good feel for what they do.
Thank you for that offer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next presenter, please.
Next, we have City of Glendale Community Services and Parks, Palmer Park Improvement Project.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. I'm Emile Tavosian, Park Development Administrator for Community Development and Parks. I have the pleasure of presenting one of our jewels in South Glendale. I'd like to start with just expressing our gratitude for the CDBG fund because it gives us the opportunity to leverage those grants, the grant funding with our development impact fees in addressing some of our needs in South Glendale. We, separate from the CDBG outreach to the community, the community parks services, I keep forgetting our name. The department had done an extensive outreach with South Glendale in about 2010, 11. And I was happy to look at the findings of those, the outreach results, and then compare it to the most recent needs assessment that was done by CDBG staff. And there's a lot of crossover and consistency. Having said that, we empower the architect to be aware of all those needs and to also do her own needs assessment of the park. As you all know, the mission of our department is park safety and security. So that's our number one focus at every one of our projects that we try to improve. We believe that well-maintained, attractive parkland really translates to quality neighborhoods, which directly relates to quality of life matters. I have a pretty long presentation. I'm going to go through it. You can feel free to interrupt me anytime you want. It's not a formal presentation. Just as a way of introducing, this is Palmer Park. That's Palmer Avenue. And then this is the street to the south. This is not far from Maple Park, obviously you know that. And both of those parks are truly jewels for our Southern Glendale communities. They're heavily used. What's interesting about both of these parks is that even though they're a few blocks apart, they're very different character-wise. Narduli Studio is also the architect who completed the design work for Maple Park. That's under construction. I don't know if you've had a chance to drive by and notice some of the differences that have already been done. Because they're not, the entire park isn't closed. It's incrementally closed to accommodate for the construction. But as I said, this is a very different park compared to the other one. That one has a community center associated with the park. This one is very different. It's larger in size, but we have a community garden. However, we're not touching the community garden with this effort at the moment. I know it's difficult to read, but this is Susan, who couldn't be here this morning, Susan Narduli, the architect, basically focuses on some of the key design challenges. Introducing a new entrance, addressing the really overly-used and tired-looking restroom structure. We have a heavily-used and very-popular picnic area. The playground is really nicely designed, but it's in dire need of help. We have an existing two-half courts that we're going to be converting and expanding. We have a waiting pool. I'm not seeing the waiting pool. Maybe it's not here. It's tucked in here somewhere. And it's really old and tired, yet very popular. Again, I know it's hard to read, but this is just a proposed site plan addressing the playground areas, introducing a natural play area here for mostly toddlers. We're bringing a lot of the natural rocks from Duke Magian Wilderness Park here and using them as part of the exploratory activities for the kids. The waiting pool gets enlarged and it's going to be ADA accessible so even kids with, on wheelchairs can actually access it. It's called, it has what's called a beachfront, so it's a natural slope. You don't step into it. You naturally go into it. The restroom structure gets renovated. The park entrance gets completely redefined. We are redefining police drive routes for security purposes. And as you can see, this is the expansion of the basketball courts. One full court and one half court. This, we're reserving for a future skate park. Skate seems to be one of the most desirable activities in this neighborhood. And unfortunately, we don't have any skating opportunities here. And what they really wanted was a skate park with street features. Not the bowls, but more of the curbs and the benches and things that they can jump off of.
Where is that desire? How do you quantify that desire?
From our community assessment.
Your assessment, okay.
Yeah.
Another question.
Sure.
For the Maple Park, is there another basketball court there?
Maple Park does not have a basketball. That one has a tennis court.
That's what I was going to ask.
Yes, it has a tennis court that we're actually improving with new lighting, netting, resurfacing and a new fabric. We did an outreach for both of these parks, both this one and Maple, you know, because they're so close, and I know that they're very different, but we take advantage of our community outreach. We've gone to coffee with the principal at every one, at every school surrounding the site. There's about four or five. So we've talked to the parents. The moms are great because not only they have kids at the schools, but they also have toddlers or older kids. So we get to tap into their desires. But we also outreach to our daily, daily high school friends who are very interested at this park. And they actually, for Maple Park, they had an active role in designing some of the artwork on the inside of the community center. So, you know, your point is really well-taken. What we do is we constantly test our ideas by reaching out to the students and the users. And then we have a built-in senior community there 24/7, so we can reach out to them regularly. The project manager who worked on this, who started on this, and also with Maple Park, she's become personal friends with, she's a City of Glendale staff, but she's become friendly with all the senior staff as well as the mothers who frequent the park.
As have you.
As have I. Yes, thank you.
Well, one of the reasons I asked that about the skate features is because I know it's been a source of discussion for the one that we have off of North Verdugo. And I'm just curious as to what the usage levels are on North Verdugo that might suggest what the usage level might be here. That's the only reason. I'm not familiar enough about it. That's why I'm asking the question.
It's a very interesting culture and community. You know, they're amazing in how they communicate with each other. And Glendale seems to be on their tweets all the time as one of the attractive sites to visit. I find that as something that's desirable. I know it may be a nuisance, but that means that our kids feel safe coming to Glendale.
Is it Glendale kids using it, or are there people coming from outside Glendale?
This one would be mostly Glendale because we have a lot of younger kids. This park is interesting, again, in the sense that, you know, as with Maple Park, we have probably three or four different community groups that use the park. In the mornings, we have the older grandparents who are usually exercising, using our kids' playground as exercise opportunities. Then we have the young mothers with toddlers and the baby carriages. After that, we have the high schoolers and the junior high schoolers who love to frequent the park because they don't have any reason to go home yet and they don't really have backyards, so this is their backyard by default. And then in the evening, we have a lot of the families that come back.
May I ask, how much was pre-designated last year?
I don't have that number off the top of my hand, Moisest. It's around four?
It's actually two years ago, I believe it was $3.96, something like that.
I'm drawing a blank. I should have that number.
I'd have to look at that, I think.
Yeah, I can get that number.
What has been done since the last amount of pre-designated monies that was provided to Parmack Park up until, let's say, this past year in terms of expansion, in terms of ADA improvements?
It takes a while to get, that wasn't enough funding to start the project. So we started some of the design assessment. And then with additional funding this year, and then we're also going to be getting a large, equal to CDBG, but if not equal or greater, development impact fees to be able to, we're talking about a million-dollar project here overall. I don't have the final numbers. So it doesn't, even though the funding gets appropriated that fiscal year, it takes a while to get going because it's usually not just a simple ADA ramp that you have to put in. Thank you.
Sure.
This just, what did I do? I'm sorry. This is the new entrance to the park. A more focused design to the park. Currently, it's a very angular entrance. We're providing a nicer experience for the patrons coming to the park and giving them multiple options to go to the picnic area. We're sort of defining the entrance once you get in as well. Focusing on the kids' playground, ages two to five, five to 12, and then what they're calling a natural play area with storytelling and exploratory stonework. This is the shade structure that's being proposed over the play structures. Natural play with some, again, discovery poetry. This is the waiting pool. As I mentioned earlier, it's an ADA accessible with a lot of bench seating around for parents. One of the desired amenities was adding picnic tables close to the waiting pool because as people rent, they want to be able to use the picnic area right adjacent. This is the size of the existing waiting pool, and we're really enlarging it. Just a perspective drawing.
So we currently are on the designing stage?
We are actually planning on going to council in about a month to get approval, to finish our construction documents. And I'm hopeful that we'll go out to bid before the end of the year and start construction by early next year.
A question. Does the city pay for the design? The design team, the consultant, your architect?
It's all part of the same funding. So CDBG, we're leveraging CDBG and development impact fees for design fees as well.
Okay.
And administrative costs. The basketball courts, taking what's existing and then really enlarging it.
So there's no outside companies involved?
Yes, this is, Narduli Studios is an outside design firm. We have an internal project manager, and we also have a design firm that we retained.
Thank you.
Sure.
And Susan, she's the architect?
Susan is the architect who, you may have met her, I'm trying to remember if she did a presentation a few years ago for Maple Park, but she's definitely been before the Parks Commission. We're introducing six fitness equipment. The majority of them addressing not only teenage age fitness needs, but also our senior community. Improving the restroom structure with graphics and new poetry. We're salvaging the tile work that was done by, I believe, this is Muir Elementary, 25 years ago. So most of those kids are probably parents in the neighborhood. So we're trying to preserve some of the tile work and reuse it in the park so they can bring their kids back. Introducing a lot of picnic areas and benches. In terms of improving the picnic pavilion, we're replacing the existing barbecue and sink area. Just again, highlighting new park identities, side amenities, go and enhance active zones for the kids and different users. Extensive sustainable planting, and we're enhancing fitness and play for all age groups. Unfortunately, as with a lot of our work, most of the work isn't seen because it's all either underground or overhead, lighting improvements and irrigation improvements that no one really sees, but really sucks up a lot of the funding. Did you have a question?
No, I was just wondering, are there security features as well to make sure there's adequate security?
The driving path, the police regularly visit the park and they, we gave them an opportunity to drive through the park rather than drive through the grass. Now they have a designated route. We are hopeful that as our opportunity with fiber optics expands in South Glendale, we can add some camera surveillance as well. It really is a function of the fiber optics at this point. And then this one, this park doesn't have a full-time staff there, obviously, because we didn't have a community center. But given its proximity to some of our other parks, our maintenance staff and our, the community programming that goes on here is sort of our eyes and ears at the park. And we also have a sort of a built-in community who feel comfortable reaching out to us if there is an issue, a broken sprinkler or just a graffiti issue. Again, I don't want to talk about all those specific improvements. This is just the extensive landscaping that's getting done and defining different... This is like creating a large set of rooms within a large house. With improved lighting, again, the kids are our focus and the other users, community group users. That's it. That concludes.
Thank you, Mr. Tavosian.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I just may be mentioning, Xeriscap, are you tending to use it more? I know you noticed you have a lot, a lot of plants.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Xeriscap, you know, where we just...
Xeriscap?
Yeah.
Oh, well, we're not doing xeriscaping because people want green. So we're not touching the lawn. However, we're introducing a lot of indigenous planting in the area where we didn't have before.
You didn't have them before.
Some of our trees there are sickly, so instead of replanting, you know, the same kind, we're looking for indigenous trees that are more appropriate. We are also removing some lands... We are also removing some landscaping to accommodate for the expanded basketball courts and the exercise equipment.
So the park is currently open, correct?
The park is currently open and it most likely will stay open during construction, much like Maple Park, because it would be a shame to close it for six months for construction.
Do we have a timeframe as to when this will be complete?
I think this is probably a nine-month construction project, so I'm hopeful that we start next year and be ready before next summer.
That's great.
That's my goal. But Maple will be done, I'm happy to say that Maple, Pacific Artificial Turf and Maryland Park that are all in this neighborhood will be done before the summer, so our kids will have new places to go to.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
That was efficient.
Next item, please.
We have item 4A3, review proposal evaluation process and interview and deliberation protocol.
Great. To behalf of our first presenter, Mr.?
Vice Chair McCarron, member of the committee, just, that is actually an agenda item, but I would defer that probably to later on. Again, we were discussing the protocol for the interviews for the nonprofit. You heard from departments and what we allocated was 20 minutes each, which last time we had 15 minutes, to give a little bit more time for questions. There are five proposals, two by the same agency, so I guess our recommendation from staff is to continue the same protocol of each agency receiving 20 minutes, allowing them maybe five to seven minutes of a presentation for their project. There probably are more questions related to construction project, or not necessarily, than our social services. And then we can discuss the deliberations, I guess, at the time we began to discuss that item.
Great. So we have five proposals totaling $622,575, and our available funding for this year is $300,000, so it's going to be another difficult task for us to complete, but I'm confident that we'll go through this and it should be fine at the end. All right, next item?
Item 4B, action items. At one, conduct interviews with nonprofit capital improvement applicants and deliberate and approve funding recommendations. The first agency is YMCA of Glendale, Glendale YMCA ADA Rehabilitation Access and Mobility Project Ramp. Please.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair and committee members. My name is George Seikaly, I'm the CEO at the Glendale YMCA. And before you, a proposal that talks about providing accessibility to our plunge pool, which is located in the main building at the hotel building, which was built 1926. We have two pools at the Y and we serve thousands of people. What's been happening is that we have the main pool used for everything, for the swim team who wants the temperature at 76 and the seniors who want, and the people with disabilities who need it to be over 90. So we're serving two masters and no one is really happy. In order for us to serve the community with a greater magnitude, we needed to activate, have handicap accessibility to our warm water pool right now, which is already built 1926, as I mentioned, but we cannot open it for post-rehab and rehab due to accessibility. We were here before you last year for the same reason, and I know for a fact that 54,000 people in Glendale suffer from different types of disabilities. I'm also active in different committees in the city for healthy lifestyle committee, healthier communities, all aspects of what needs to be done to make Glendale a healthier community. And we've identified the need for a therapeutic pool that is not after, during rehab or post-rehab, that it's going to be income-based, based on, again, people's income. They could come seven days a week and receive, get conditioned and get better, you know, just coming out from the challenge that they have, or at least create a better quality We have the skills to bring in programs that can address the needs in this community. We just need accessibility to that pool and that way it would be segregated and we can take it from 93 to 98 degrees and open it from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM or 6:00 AM to 3:00 PM just for people who want to get, you know, people who are suffering from arthritis, fibromyalgia, people just done from surgeries, they can all be coming to the Y at a very affordable rate. All what we need is accessibility, and that's really what's been preventing us from doing this for the past four years. Currently, we serve about 2,000 seniors and not including the people with disability otherwise, and I know this is not only for the ones we're serving, but for those people who need this service. Again, we have a pool that's already built and all what we need is accessibility for people who need to get into that type of environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, or any?
I have some questions, but before I start, I just wanted to kind of put out there that I'm going to be asking tough questions of all the groups because as the vice chair indicated, we only have half the amount of money that's being requested, so I don't want you to think that my questions are targeting any particular group. I just want to ask some of the tougher questions that we need to ask to help us later on in trying to make, see how we can stretch these dollars. So first of all, thank you. The Y, I think, serves a great purpose in our community, so I appreciate all the efforts that the YMCA puts forth. In your report, you mentioned, you know, you had this sale of some property that would generate some additional funds for yourself. If the amount that comes in, if we were to designate any amounts for the Y, comes in at significantly less than what you are proposing that you need, would you be able to allocate from those proceeds that you had, I think it said three and a half million of unrestricted funds would come in from that sale?
Exactly.
I don't know if that's the amount it ended up at, but I know that's what you put in your proposal. Would you be able to fill that gap so that you could achieve your objective, assuming you got less than what you've asked for?
Up to $100,000 we can. It's actually land use, long-term lease, and the city council just approved the funding Tuesday. So now, you know, we're progressing fast. Hopefully the funding, if everything goes well with the developer, we should receive the funding by September, October. Whatever you give us will be highly appreciated, but then we may have to either go into two phases or wait until we get the funding. And having it, we tried to do two phases and the cost of having developers come in twice was a lot more expensive than having them come in the first, you know, from the first go and just finish.
The second question I have, which is, and pardon my ignorance, you keep mentioning temperatures of water. How is that determined in terms of what temperature you have to keep it at and why you need that sort of accommodation?
Thank you. Yeah, the, you're talking about the plunge, the pool, the therapy. Therapeutic pool usually stays between 94 to 100 degrees almost, 94 to 90, some hospitals take it up maybe to 100. That the warm water temperature warm up the muscles. You know, you're in an environment that's extremely, once you're in an aquatics environment anyway, you're in the safest environment to do exercise. But the warmer the water, if you're not exerting a lot of efforts, the easier on your muscles and it helps the muscles to be warmer, so prevent injuries even further, and it's easier for people with disabilities to move in a warmer water.
But you need that sort of, you absolutely need that sort of segregation?
Only because I have a swim team who won the city championship, by the way, you know, who wanted the kids who wanted it at 78 on one side. So I'm now making the main pool at 85 and no one's happy. Just being straightforward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tashin?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to go over a few numbers. The total projected cost is $325,720, and of that amount, $50,000 was allotted to you through CDBG funds last year. You mentioned $100,000 is coming from YMCA funding. There was a gap of about $23,720 that I believe may also come from the Y, or hopefully will come from the Y.
Yes, there is also private grant for 75 we received already. We got the permits, all the permits done through that and some handicap lifters.
And then the balance you're asking through this year's funding, is that correct? There are four phases. Do you or have you determined how much each phase is going to cost?
We're trying to do the whole thing at once for 325, but I also have our architect, Richard, here, if you'd like to ask him any questions.
Well, the only concern, and I think Commissioner Arminian brought it up, is that, well, we're certainly not going to have the 152 that you requested, quite frankly, and we just want to know what amount that we can be able to allocate this year that would hopefully assist you and help you in going through the different phases. Again, I'm not sure, perhaps you could be able to enlighten me a bit on that?
Yeah, we could do it, go back to the original plan and do it into two phases. And if, it depends how much we get, we, you know, we could get the first phase where we can, you know, get rid of the wall and expand the corridor and do that because we're getting the lifters from a private funding. Then go into the locker rooms as phase two. And maybe Richard could help me with the cost on the first phase. Richard Dell.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair and members. My name is Richard Dell, MDM Architects here in Glendale. We were instrumental in hopefully assisting George and YMCA make this presentation last year. We thank you very much for entertaining us again this year. To answer your question directly, it is possible to phase it, phase one and phase two. Phase one was specifically outlined to do the outside chairlift and entry into lower level of the basement. And that phase, I think, was scheduled for about $140,000, I believe. Phase two was then take you from that lower basement level down to the pool level, which is another three and a half feet below that lower basement. That could be done on phase two. We have phase one permitted right now. However, as George has stated, when we tried to do this and get the contractor to mobilize two times, the costs, as you can imagine, grew. So the thought was to come back in and try to do it all at one time, keep the costs down. Ergo, we went back and said, let's put it all together and see if we can allocate, get allocation and funding for one project instead of two. But to answer your question directly, it could be phased, it would just cost more money. And we're prepared to do that, actually.
But the amount that was allocated last year, was any of that used for, was there a phase started last year? Did you start a phase one? I think that was the plan when we allocated.
As you know, those funds can't be spent for architectural fees and so.
Right, right.
So what the Y has done is found some private funding to pay for the architectural fees and we got the plans permitted for phase one. But again, $50,000 doesn't cover the entire cost of construction for phase one. Ergo, we're back here asking for additional funds. Whatever you do grant us, that will go to phase one. If that's all we get, then we'll have to do phase one standalone by itself, figure out how to do phase two.
Okay.
Let me go back to the water temperature, one other issue on that if I could. Again, traditionally, what we'd see is competitive swimming and recreational swimming has to be at the 78-degree temperature. People exercise and they want cold water, so it's not by happenstance. It truly is a traditional thing that we have to do, separate those temperatures in waters to serve the mass in terms of people who want aquatic, therapeutic aquatics and/or just recreational and competitive aquatic. So hopefully that answers that question.
Yeah, and the difference is if you go over 86 degrees to 87 degrees in that swimming, you could have hypothermia.
One quick question. You talked about private funding. What type of private funding do you anticipate for, let's say, this coming fiscal year?
We haven't applied yet because I'm finding out there's a lot of complexity into the process. If you get more funding from private and the government, it's just more challenging to mix them. The foundation that we received the first funding from is more than willing to help out. The question is, how are we going to be, you know, we figured out we can go and buy the equipment from that one and go through CDBG funding with the construction because we found out and correctly from Ron Moises is that it's really hard to mix them up.
Part of that problem is that when you blend private and public funds, the law states that all that has to go and be treated as public funds, which means Davis Bacon, Bailing Wage, et cetera, et cetera, which continually drive the cost of construction up. But the idea was to take those private funds, apply those to hard assets, you might say, such as the chairlifts, things of that nature that could be extracted, bought, kept aside, and then provide the money that we get from the CBG or construction cost only, in an effort to try and, again, stretch these dollars as far as possible without overburdening one particular entity, you might say.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Well, maybe just a few. You guys were kind of ported on and you did a good job, so I'm fairly well satisfied with those questions. I was wondering, on your therapeutic pool, some of the concerns, one that I had even raised was the water, besides it being the temperature that is chlorinated, would you be looking to maybe change it to, you know, non-chlorinated water, like salt or whatever they use?
Yeah, we're still looking at this technology because when I tried it in a prior assignment, it caused rash, you know, like CO2 and oxygen.
Yeah.
And instead of chlorine. Right now, there is no strong evidence that the rash issues have been resolved. I've looked, go ahead.
Witness. Not your pool, but any chlorine, I just can't handle it.
Yeah, I know.
And when I was going through therapeutic and recommended aqua therapy, the hospitals, which will, you know, cover the occupational therapy or whatever it is that meets your insurance, you have to be certified, they, all of them are chlorine. And so look around, and there's not, there's not any that I know of out there public that are therapeutic pools that are in fact non-chlorine, and I guess you need me, but maybe that's just for private pools. But that seems to me like if you're working with, and through your proposal, that you're working with Glendale Adventist, they were, you know, they need, and there's such a, there is such a need. Glendale Memorial has a pool, it's packed, but it's chlorine. So, you know, we look for other places to go and there's just not other than homes. But in terms of, you know, there are a few homes available, you know, you can go over there and tap on your daughter's door. But it seems to me like this would be a big advantage in your collaboration with the hospitals. And so I really fully support that, and of course, you can't get there without your handicap access, so I recognize that that's equally, you can't have one without the other, I don't think.
Right.
So I think you're going in the right direction.
We need research.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, very nice. Okay, do we have the next agency here?
Next, we have Glendale Adventist Medical Center, Center for Mission and Community Development.
Thank you. I'm Bruce Nelson, Director of Community Services at Glendale Adventist Medical Center. Happy to be here. Greetings, Madam Chair and members of the committee. As you know, Glendale's a changing environment. We see an aging population, more and more seniors, and more and more need for senior services. So Glendale Adventist Medical Center has been engaged in a process of committing and developing a resource on our campus to the service of seniors. Now, you may also know that we've recently developed a senior program, well, recently, over the last few years, and now have about 2,000 members that are participating in that senior program. But we're looking at seeing that continue to expand. It's been a growing curve and obviously the demand for these education, fitness, wellness resources is deeply felt here in our community, and there aren't a lot of resources available to meet this demand. So we're creating a senior center. We have a large facility, it's nicely suited.
Excuse me for a second. I apologize for interrupting you, Mr. Nelson. Vice Chair McCarron, I apologize, but I should have brought this up, but apparently from the past, we've had notified you would have to.
Recuse myself, and I was going to do that after the presentation. Would you like? Would you like me to recuse myself now?
Yes.
Leave the room too?
Yes.
Is that something that you, okay.
And the reason being that Mark Karian is an employee of Glendale Adventist Medical Center.
Sorry, Bruce.
Yeah, I did this a little bit close, huh?
Okay, well, I have to just go ahead and let my colleagues take over from here. I'll be back.
Of course, we knew that she would have to recuse herself, and has it at times passed in these situations as well. I just wanted to hear, have her hear my, you know, my speech here, just. You can tell her later.
We'll tape it.
You can meet over lunch. Okay, very good. So in any event, this is the demand that really needs to be addressed in our community, and we're certainly, you know, position ourselves to be able to do that. Not just for the members of the, people have already signed up to be members of the senior services at the hospital, but other seniors throughout the community as well. And there's really a lot of people. I mean, we can talk about, about fitness programs that exist out there, but let's face it, there's a certain point at which, you know, seniors don't like to be in spandex down there at the Gold's Gym with, you know, the rest of the bodybuilders. So there isn't a, you know, a real need, a real demand for, for this kind of resource. But we're well on our way through support we've had from CDBG and the city and, and the hospital for some time. We've been able to put in the fire life safety systems, we've been able to put in the heating and air conditioning systems, and those are up, excuse me, and operational, and, you know, just working well. So now we need ADA bathrooms, that's really where we are right now. You've probably seen some of the pictures in the material that we submitted, but the bathroom isn't really suitable for the kind of demand that we expect to see the facility have. It's really limited to a, to one bathroom that's used unisex, so we'll have men and women both using that. And if we have 100 people in there for an education event or exercise event or something like that, it simply won't accommodate it. So that's what we need to do next, that's what we're asking for today. There's a lot more that I could say, of course. You can imagine, in a, in a space like this, there's a lot of things we can do, screening activities, health education events, wellness activities, and so forth. But let me stop for, you know, for where we are right here and just entertain questions that you may have.
Well, my first question is to the staff. I noticed there, again, several weaknesses that have been indicated in the, in the analysis by staff, and I wanted to know if those weaknesses have been addressed in GMAC's response, addressed adequately.
Yes, I, that's a good question. That's actually a good question, and it's a question I would have asked Mr. Nelson here.
Sure.
One of the, one of the weaknesses that we asked was the implementation plan and when the project could get started. And I know you outlined the months and so on, but pending, if, if the city would fund the project, when would you be able to start your, your construction documents and then the permitting that you have an architect already on board and?
Fortunately, we're, we're, we're ahead of the game on this, we already have the plans drawn up. Now, we'll have to update those plans, you know, relevant to any changes in code that may have occurred over the last 12 to 18 months, but the architectural plans for the work have already been completed, you know, and, and my friend here, Larry, can speak more to that if you have detailed questions that you want to ask in that regard. But we would expect to finish it in a year, or less, actually. And again, Larry can address that, but he and I discussed that on the way down here, so we would expect to see it beginning, just as soon as we have the funding available and then completed within the timeframe that's been anticipated. Is that?
I'm still not sure if that.
Yes, that's, that's.
Is that adequate?
Yes.
Okay. Could we go on to the next bullet point, which is GMAC did not accurately identify the CDBG funding approved and expanded from previous CDBG grants? And if we could go further on and just finish that up?
Okay.
If those responses were adequate.
Yes. I would say that the chart that you receive, and you should have received the response from the, the agency, there is a number of grants that were provided to GMC. And I would also mention, there was ADA funds previously granted to GMC 2010 and then 2011 for this specific project. What had occurred was that when the previous year project, 2009 HVAC, went out, it was, it was definitely not funded adequately enough. And so the committee, previous committee, made a recommendation to transfer the ADA restroom funds to the HVAC project and have them come back later on over a proposal for the full new committee to request funds for ADA. So this particular project actually had been funded in the past by the committee, and I don't know if that was adequately addressed when they submitted the proposal, so I wanted them to respond to that. So that just, you know, that's just a note there. Everything else is, was fine. The total amounts there are the grant funds received by GMC over the past seven years, eight years.
And again, because I'm new, I apologize for this question, but, and staff is satisfied with the performance in the past?
Yes. We completed the recent HVAC project, and they mentioned they do have plans and specs ready for the restroom project, which was halted because of the bidding was too high, the proposals came in too high.
When we did the HVAC project, we didn't anticipate that we were going to have to put in new electrical service for the facility. And the HVAC demand was such that for a building built in 1926, the existing electrical service simply couldn't support that. So there was an additional expense associated with that, which is absorbed kindly with the committee's support to, was allocated to the HVAC project. So now we're back to the ADA restrooms.
So in other words, you're here at the committee's recommendation from last year?
Well, I'm, I'm saying that we're back with the requests that we, that we brought previously, which was approved previously, but unfortunately, the funding had to be allocated to HVAC.
And they say come back next year.
I'd love to think that the committee loves this and would like to have us come back, but I wouldn't necessarily say that, that they asked us to come back, so.
I was wondering, where, where is the, the center located?
It's on Vallejo Drive, just adjacent to, and actually a part of the hospital campus.
It's part of the hospital campus?
Yes, right on.
It's not down here in Glendale?
No.
For some reason, I had associated Larry Zarian's name with that.
That's true. Larry was the person who did the initial, the, the original.
Proposal.
Celebration of the, of the opening. So he was there to cut the scissors when we first dedicated to community service-related activities.
But you're not in an identified low-income census tract?
No, it's not. Although, you know, obviously, ours, we're a tertiary care center and we serve.
Everybody.
Yeah. 60% of the population that we serve at the hospital is actually in an underserved class of some kind or another.
There's no question about that. Then I have a, I have a question that I know that good work that you do, but I have a concern about, you know, we have to meet all these requirements on discrimination.
Yes.
And you have this, what I consider a serious discrimination issue, and not with the lawsuit, I guess.
And what?
Filed. Is that against the hospital?
What discrimination issue are you referring to?
Uh, one that came before the city council here. Was on the smoking ordinance? Glendale Adventist employee?
Oh, 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 you're, you're referring to, yes. I don't know if this is the, the place to, that's, you know, obviously being addressed by a negotiation between that individual and legal counsel, so I don't know.
But it is an existing lawsuit.
I believe so. Yeah, I don't have any particular details about that. I mean, I was originally named in that, and I have a lot to say about that, but I don't know that I can today or.
You better not.
So I was actually removed from the lawsuit personally, as was anybody else on my team. And I regard that person to be a, you know, a good friend of mine at one point, so.
Sure.
Anyway, it's a.
It's hurtful.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a few questions if my, unless my fellow commissioners want to continue.
Yeah, please go.
Okay. I just wanted to continue on one question that Commissioner Ramirez asked about. So the, the facility is not located in the low-income census tract, and you did make a broad comment about who uses the hospital in general, but I'm more interested about this specific facility and any sort of data that you have in terms of what types of, what demographics use it, in terms of income levels.
Absolutely. Yes. First of all, I want to say in that regard, it's going to be dedicated as a senior center. And so it's going to fall out under the CDBG guidelines because it serves seniors, and there's a certain category that, once it serves seniors, and perhaps you can say more about that, Moises, than I can, but if it's dedicated to serving seniors, then it's gonna, you know, it's going to have a certain suitability associated with that. Do you want to just clarify that?
As committee members, actually, to a certain extent, there, there is a little caveat here. There are two restrooms here that we're looking at. One is, which is upstairs, community center, which is actually where the senior services will be, and I believe one downstairs, where it's actually more of an open, thrift store, community center, food distribution. That would not be a senior services facility. So there's two, two areas in that.
So let me address the downstairs. The downstairs facility addresses, the services there are virtually 100% low-income. So there's a food bank there for, for people that, you know, just have trouble getting food. There's a variety of other resources in terms of educational programs, or employment support programs, or different types of support groups and so forth. Virtually 100% of the people that are served in what's called the Share Ourselves program is, are, are serving low-income people who would be appropriate under the CDBG criteria.
Thank you. My second question is, I know the amounts thrown around in the proposal in terms of how much you need, et cetera.
Yes.
But you also kind of made tangential reference to the amounts that Glendale Adventist themselves are putting in to the facility. There's some sort of quantification you could share with us in terms of what the hospital has put into this facility, just so that we have some context?
Yes, with respect to this, we have $90,000 that we're asking for from CDBG. There's another approximately $120,000 or $130,000 that the hospital will be putting into this as well. So we're a little more than matching that. That, that issue came before our capital committee for the hospital, just a week or so ago, and it was approved. So we have the approval on the hospital side for the additional capital expense associated with that. In addition to that, of course, the hospital maintains the facility in general, so there's a lot of expenses associated with all of the maintenance and upkeep. Now that they've finished the heating and air conditioning, the hospital's going through and painting the interior of the facility, so it's not reflected in here as well. There's a lot of other expenses like that that are supportive in nature that simply need to.
So the 120, 130 is just having to do with this particular proposal?
That's correct.
But that's really in addition to the amounts that the hospital has already put into the facility in past years?
That's correct.
Okay. And again, I'll qualify my next question, just because I'm going to ask a tough question at least of everyone, because as you know, we have to rationalize very little funds. But, you know, when you compare the hospital to other nonprofits, you know, one could argue that the hospital has deeper pockets as an operation, much like if Kaiser Permanente were coming in here as a multimillion-dollar company, you know, asking for CDBG funds compared to a nonprofit that might maybe have a million-dollar budget in comparison. So how do you rationalize that aspect of it? Because we're going to have to sit up here and.
I understand.
And rationalize that as well.
I'm glad you asked that. And you'll notice that the Glendale Adventist Medical Center is really honoring a commitment to the community in, in building and providing a facility that, that can keep us well and healthy. You know, we had a mandate by the state of California to improve our facilities, to make them seismically retrofitted, to be appropriate. That cost us about $120 million over the last few years to do that. The total cost of the project was well over $200 million, so there's a lot of other upgrades and improvements that we made as, as a part of that commitment. Now, I'm going to say that Glendale Adventist is the only hospital in our community that did that, but as a part of our commitment to making sure that we have a safe, you know, and, and appropriate resource here. But that did take a lot of capital expense to do that, to make and honor that kind of commitment and so forth. So, you know, when it comes to a program like this, it's competing with all of the other demands for capital dollars that hospitals have. And, and this isn't our core business. Our core business is treating patients. It would be nice if our core business was prevention and wellness and health education and all those other kinds of things too, but that's just not the way healthcare is structured today. And so, you know, we're, obviously, we're needing to deal with what we have. Nonetheless, the hospital is still deeply committed to this and demonstrated that in its commitment of additional resources to support this effort. We have a broad reach in our community, we have a lot of influence, and we want to exercise that as constructive and as helpful way as we possibly can. This is a rare resource in our community. We don't have a lot of gymnasiums, we don't have a lot of facilities like this, and we want to preserve it, and we want to make it available as, you know, a commitment of our hospital to the health and well-being of our community. And in a very real sense, this is our hospital engaging that other half of our responsibility to own the health of our community, so.
Thank you, and I, like I said, don't take, don't take my questioning in any way as a negative, because I know the hospital plays an important role in our community, and we do appreciate everything that Glendale Adventist does do. My final question is, you know, if we don't come in at the funding level requested, will the hospital be able to cover the gap to, in order to complete the project?
Yes. Well, clearly, that'll be something that we go back and discuss internally at the hospital. It is possible for us to phase this. We have a bathroom upstairs, and we have a bathroom downstairs. I'm most concerned about the bathroom upstairs, because that's where we need to have the resource available for our community as quickly as possible. Now, we have a break facility, I want to see that translated into a resource that the community's utilizing, and that'll happen when we get those new bathrooms in.
Is there a breakdown of the cost of ADA improvements and upgrade in the upstairs bathroom?
There is a tentative one. So if you, if you look at the past funding, you'll notice, for example, that there, these were actually broken out in the past, and I think it's.
Perhaps I missed that. Can you direct me?
If you noticed, there was $115,000 for the upstairs bathroom, and $71,000 for the downstairs bathroom, so.
How much for the, how much for the upstairs?
$115,000.
Okay.
The upstairs bathroom, and $71,000 for the downstairs. Now, obviously, those were, that was 2010 figures, you know, construction costs inflate, but, and then, but nonetheless, you know, it has been broken out in the past and looked at separately, and we have separate plans for each of the different.
So if you were to phase it, you would prioritize the upstairs bathroom?
Definitely. We'd do the upstairs bathroom first.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't. Do you have any questions?
Well, maybe a clarification for me. This project was initially, initiated by the city?
The overall.
The, you know, this community center.
Well, Glendale Adventist initiated the project, I'm not sure. We, we brought this to the CDBG committee for consideration, it's been approved for.
But I noticed it, somehow you had attached Larry Zarian's name to it, so.
Oh, he was a part of the dedication of the facility.
Okay. It's not dedicated to him.
Pardon? No, it's not dedicated to him, he was a part of the, of the dedication of the facility to the community.
And the idea, though, came from Glendale Adventist originally?
Yes.
Centered.
I'm sure Larry was involved in some discussion of it at some level.
I'm sure he was.
I'm sure, I'm sure he's listening and following closely.
Okay?
Yes. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Should we invite our vice chair back?
Yes. Also, would also, I didn't mention too, that we have those forms to fill out, the valuation forms, so I know.
We've been doing that.
Okay, yes.
Can I ask one question before we bring her back? So in terms of the end of this process, how will we handle this particular proposal with regard to permission? with regard to Commissioner Mark Arminian?
Vice Chair, Mark Arminian, would have to step out again for any discussion related to this.
We'll talk about that.
Yes.
So we'll have to sequester the discussion around that part of it specifically? Okay.
All right. Next agency, please.
The next agency is Door of Hope Plumbing Rehabilitation Project Phase Two.
Well, good morning, CDBG Advisory Council and Madam Chair and staff. As you know, Door of Hope Hamilton Court is a vital frontlines organization specifically focused on helping homeless women and children and those that are homeless as a result of domestic violence. We take these families from homelessness to self-sufficiency to permanent housing, and there's a great need for this work. As you also are aware that in 2013, the homeless count included 320 homeless people, and of those, 116 were individuals of families. 63 were children, which is 20% of the homeless population, and 39 were women and children who escaped domestic violence. Door of Hope is a solution to homeless families and domestic violence. They're only, in the last six months, during the last CDBG, first months of the CDBG current fiscal year, Door of Hope has served over 23 families, including 49 children and 72 people. I believe Friday, you heard a few stories of the impact that Door of Hope makes in specific families' lives. And I bring this to your attention, just to be able to note that, as you make this decision about this plumbing capital improvement project, it's really not just about this plumbing physical need, but it's about actually changing lives and this comprehensive transitional housing program that helps homeless families rebuild their lives. We're extremely thankful for the part, your partnership with the Door of Hope and your significant funding that you've given it in the past for electrical work as well as our windows project. As you can see in the pictures in your packet, this building, being a 1929 building, has had its share of wear and tear, and very few improvements have been made to the plumbing and bathrooms. Many of the, any building built in 1985-years-old or older would have extreme problems with wear and tear. But if you think about the extremeness of what we do, there's over 80 new residents every year that come through our program, and that's a lot of wear and tear, especially on the bathrooms. Bathtubs are probably part of the worst, with flaking plaster that is chipped and worn, and rust is starting to come through. It's unhealthy and unsafe for people, especially children. There's permanent stains in the toilets, and they're breaking down and overflowing frequently. There are broken tiles without proper sealing off, and the shower, in the showers, and as you know, as that happens, that leaks into the walls and the floor, and the joists and others, wood underneath begins to rot. I believe last year, I shared about a repair that we had that started as a small, simple clogged, clog in a bathroom, and we thought it was going to be simple. It turned into a massive repair, a massive, huge repair of that one bathroom, which was extremely costly. We found holes and cracks in the drain pipes. We found just a lot, a lot of major, major problems with rotting and had to replace a significant amount of that whole bathroom. The old galvanized drain pipes are likely similar condition throughout the building. Our bathrooms are definitely a huge need and need to be upgraded. As it is a huge project, and it's a huge building, 16 units, it's also very costly. You generously awarded our first part of the project, and we've gotten a lot of progress made with that. Thousands of dollars have been spent on our own private funding, on drawings, scope of work and details, building code and permit inquiries, and preparation of an official bid packet, which is ready, almost ready to go out. We just need the remaining funding to be able to put the projects together to maximize the funding to, in both parts at the same time, to be able to be most effective and efficient with the funding. We have significant leverage already and that we're bringing to the table to match the CDBG funding. As you can see, we have amazing and measurable outcomes. We are pleased to consider this Door of Hope Plumbing Project, which is a health and safety-related project for homeless women and children as a prior priority. We truly are a community partnership project. The Door of Hope partners with Verdugo Housing Corporation, which is another nonprofit which actually owns the Hamilton Court Building, and partners with Door of Hope as we provide the supportive services. I want to recognize Bill Boyd, the President of the Verdugo Housing Corporation, along with other board members. Mark Trueblood is here, as well as Patrick Lindell and Judy Kendall. They're in the audience if you would like any questions directed to them later in a few minutes. We also partner with Glendale-based R E D Architects, formerly M D M, who are contracted by Verdugo Housing Corporation to be the architects and the project managers on this project. At this time, I'd like to invite Richard Dell to come forward, as he represents R E D Architects with years of experience as a Glendale-based architectural firm, and has also done our electrical and windows project. Richard's available to answer any questions, as well as myself, but I just wanted to let you know that we're here for...
Questions?
Thank you very much.
Yes, please. Thank you. Any questions for Tim or the architect?
I have some questions that I'd like, I'm new, so I'd like a little bit more background in terms of this from a structural organizational perspective. So the building is owned by Verdugo Housing Corporation, is that correct?
That's correct.
So can you give a little bit more of an understanding of how that partnership works? Who owns the property that we would be investing in? Who has ultimate possession of the property? Because from my understanding from your proposal, it's, you actually are leasing the property from Verdugo Housing Corporation, is that correct?
That is correct.
So you're not the, we would be giving any sort of funds to Door of Hope for use in this facility, but it's not your facility at the end of the day?
Technically not, no. We have a long-term lease, and there's a really, an agreed-upon relationship between the city and Verdugo Housing Corporation and Door of Hope as we collaborate together to be able to meet this need. The building is actually, through other funding and other means, actually has a, what's the word? There's a requirement that this building cannot be used for anything else other than this purpose. So there is a definite requirement that it has to, is a covenant. There's a covenant on the building that by law cannot be used for anything other than this purpose.
So can you give me a little bit more historical, maybe staff can, historical knowledge about how this came about?
As far as I can recollect, I wasn't involved in the original covenant for the funds. The first grant funds were actually housing funds. They weren't CDBG, they were federal housing funds, I believe. I'm not sure if they were the set aside, but I believe it was home funds, which at that point allowed the previous owners, a previous agency, to use it as another transition of housing facility. And those improvements were done, a 20-year covenant is on there, so that services are provided to low-income persons. I don't know if it specified domestic violence, but it was for low-income, just as many of our housing grants are. And previous tenants left, and I believe Door of Hope came in five years ago.
2009.
2009, and began leasing. We do hold long-term leases with Verdugo Housing Corporation. The intent of Verdugo Housing Corporation has always been to service low-income persons and especially persons of domestic violence issues. So it's always been one of our nonprofit housing arms. It's not city-funded per se, but it is a, the facility's always been supported by our grant funds for the provision of housing services. So we do have some long-term leases. We do have Verdugo Housing Corporation involved in discussions whenever there's grants or changes in the project. So they are the owners, active owners, and we do have long-term leases between Door of Hope and the Verdugo Housing Corporation. In fact, our agreements with Door of Hope also include property liens on the property. So in case there are changes, we do have the properties with covenants and liens on them.
And how long is the lease for, when you say long-term lease?
I believe they're five years with renewable, five years, so usually 10-year leases with the agencies.
If I could just say, hi. I'm Bill Boyd with Verdugo Housing.
Hello, Mr. Boyd.
And it makes, the other question you should ask, and I'll ask it for you, is this asset and the funds that are put into this asset, annuaries back to the city. Our ownership of that asset goes back and reverts back to the city. So we're truly a one entity, one asset entity that's formed, and Jess and Moises can tell you more about this. The city's not allowed to own or cannot own the facility. There has to be a gasket, as a layman, an intermediary, a gasket. So we have community members made of Verdugo Housing Corporation. We have just a, we're just a one-trick pony, so to speak. We just have this asset that we shepherd its resources as best we can. Our lease, you'd never make any, is it a dollar a week? What's the lease rate?
$1,000 a month, about.
$2,000 a month. For how many units?
16.
16 units. So it's purely a holding pattern, if you will. Just, and with Pat Liddell's help, our attorney board member who used to be with the assessor, we've got, and Judy Kendall and Mark Trueblood, who owns his own property management firm, we take our resources to help Tim do what he does. And I was thinking about your role in volunteering, as you do on this board. So do we at Verdugo Housing, purely just to help the city, help this agency do what they do. And so I want to make that real, the point, that the asset enhancement, the enhancement and the capital improvements, really annuaries back to a city property. We own the title, but our loan says we give it back to the city. It might be 20 years left, I think.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I just want, the spirit in which I'm asking these questions is through lack of knowledge, so I'm trying to understand a little bit better how it all works. I appreciate that explanation.
Jess and Moises can tell you, I don't quite understand.
You don't want to say that.
Our board member.
Right. So, and because, especially because this is the largest proposal in terms of dollar amount, and because we're putting money into something, you know, that Door of Hope is the applicant here, I want to make sure that the money we put in, you know, you can't just, you know, if the board decides, hey, we want to sell this property, all of a sudden it goes. Because we're enhancing the value of the property at the end of the day.
100%, yeah, absolutely correct. And what I love about your charge is that this goes to helping families and kids. And all due respect to our other applicants, this one, I think, is a little more right close to home. Thanks very much.
I have one other question, or I should say, just comment. I don't know if you have anything to comment about this, but I was trying to research and understand Verdugo Housing Corporation as I was working on this over the weekend. And according to Secretary of State, the incorporation is suspended for Verdugo Housing Corporation. So you may want to look into that.
You do.
I was just Googling Verdugo Housing Corporation, try and understand what it is, who it is. And so naturally, I go to the, one of the places I go is to the Secretary of State's website to look up your corporation number, and it said suspended. That's why I thought I'd bring it up.
Good morning. I'm Pat Liddell, board member of the Verdugo Housing Corporation. And to address that point, and I have not done that recently within the last year, there were two Verdugo Housing Corporations. I happen to be the person who incorporated Hamilton Court Housing, which is the predecessor name for Verdugo Housing Corporation.
Maybe this is the only one.
1985, I believe it was, where the Y W C A did its domestic violence shelter. And they operated that for a number of years, and then vacated the property. When they vacated the property, and the property is still referred to as Hamilton Court, we changed the name of the corporation, which was initially incorporated as Hamilton Court Housing Corporation, to Verdugo Housing Corporation. Prior to that, there was another Verdugo Housing Corporation, which ultimately did get suspended. Now, I have to make sure that the active one is not suspended right now, and I will as soon as I leave here. And if it is, it's because of failure to file a statement of information or something along those lines. But as far as I know, we're still in good standing, and I will verify that when I get out of here.
Well, I'll hand this to you. This is off the Secretary of State, so that way you can...
Thank you. Any other questions?
So my final question, which I've been asking everyone, is, obviously, we don't have the level of funds we would like to help everyone. So if you don't get the amount that you're requesting, and since this is the highest amount, how will, how will that impact what you're doing? Because you have some amounts from the previous designation, which you're hoping to supplement with the current designation in order to make it whole and achieve your objective. So if it still comes out short, what's the impact?
Well, we do our very best to stretch every dollar. And we are limited with the prevailing wages and Davis Bacon with government funding, and so we need to fund this completely in one package and to most effectively and efficiently do that. We do have private funding that we've already leveraged, and we're bringing to the table an amount of $86,600. So we're bringing that to the table of private funding and in-kind. We're also going to do our very best to stretch every dollar and do the two phases, two parts together that will really help efficiencies. And then this amount also includes contingency, which we need to have in there, both required and also out of due diligence. We want to be certain that we have enough to complete it fully, but that also is included. And so between all of those, I believe that, you know, lesser, we will do our very best, but we do need this to be able to complete the project.
And so are you saying, and I know you said this with the previous, with the Y M C A as well, will this, if we come in with less, will it result in phasing for sure, or you'll try and close the gap with your private funding sources?
We're almost ready to go out to bid. We're going to first and foremost try to move forward and try to fund it.
With the whole project?
With the whole project, yeah.
I appreciate all the questions, and I certainly appreciate the service of the Board of the Verdugo Housing Corporation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Arminian.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Sorry.
Tim, just a quick question, Tim. Thank you, Vice Chair. Tim, as you may know, I was a commissioner, Commissioner on the Status of Woman for four years, so someone had mentioned this is close to home. Well, this is close to home to me also. And I would highly support your project. As Commissioner Arminian mentioned, we just don't have the requested funding that you're asking for. And I think I'm trying to get you to pinpoint or target the amount that we can be able to fund this year for you, that you could be able to, of course, go forward with your project. That I'm positive you're not going to be able to give me that amount, but perhaps you could be able to at least estimate for me that amount, the minimum threshold amount that you need to go forward with your project that we could allocate.
It's so hard. I was just backing out that contingency and our in-kind, and that's still around $200,000. But there is, I know your dilemma, and I think I struggle just as much to figure out, how can I make this project work with lesser? And that's my goal.
Especially, you know, because I have an interest in this project. I think you know that.
Right, right.
And I could assure you that we're not going to be able to get close to what you're requesting. That's why I'm trying to get you to pinpoint an amount that at least somewhat reasonable, and we could go forward and fund it.
Yeah, I think $180,000 to $200,000 would be, it'd be a real stretch, but it would be doable.
And if we weren't able to do that... And if we weren't able to do that, would you still move forward with at least the phase one and then come back next year or do some fundraising yourself, private fundraising and?
First, the private funding raising and do as much as we can, and then last resort, have to come back. We really don't want to have to wait.
Of course, of course.
But we'll do our best.
We only have three hundred thousand to work with. So it makes it very difficult for us. Mr. Correia.
Yes, I'm that Vice Chair. Members of committee, just to give you a little historic perspective of how we came up with, how the committee came up with the funding last year. The committee made their recommendations, really could not fund the full project either, and they made it based on the number of units. Essentially, it was about half the units or, so the numbers you see, which is on the description, is based on the number of units that could be rehabbed at that time. And then they mentioned to Door Hope to come back, request some funds for additional units. So any type of additional funds would just continue to modify those units that need to work the most, again, as a phase one, two, three. But it was a phase, as you provide additional funds, the number of units that could be modified, increased. So it was just, there's no exact number per se, but it's based on whatever units they can rehab.
And we understand the more units, if we could fund more, then it would be more cost-effective, more efficient.
Yeah, that's very true.
Thank you. Any more questions? Commissioner Ramirez?
Well, I think we've kind of shown you that we are very interested and supportive of your project. I think you're doing a good job, and it is a great program. And I, just looking from the pictures, we're going to do this good work. Those bathrooms need to be upgraded. I mean, I just can't imagine bringing children and mothers and, your bathrooms have to look better. They don't have to be perfect, but they do, they have to look much better. And I'll work with my commissioners, fellow commissioners here, to see how much funding we can get you.
Thank you. And, excuse me, if I may clarify one point. And if you look on that sheet there, it'll show the date of incorporation as being two thousand and two. That was a placeholder corporation. We wanted to keep the name Verdugo Housing Corp. At that time, the name of the organization that we're talking about that owns the property was Hamilton Court Housing Corporation. It was a few years later that we changed the name of Hamilton Court to Verdugo Housing Corporation. This corporation that you're looking at then became inactive and it became suspended. But we probably should dissolve it because it could be confusing. But there, when you look up Verdugo Housing Corporation, there should be two names that pop up on the screen, one saying suspended, one saying active and in good standing. And that's, the active one is the one that owns the property.
Yeah, I appreciate that explanation because I did look it up based on the corporation number. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, let's take a moment and fill out our forms.
Next, we have HomeNetmen Glendale, Aradat Chapter, installation of a new roof repair phase two.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome back.
Yeah. Our project is called Phase Two because last year, we applied for funding to do the roof on the whole building.
Can you say your name for the record, please?
Armand Gorgorian, representing HomeNetmen Glendale, Aradat Chapter. So we applied for that, and unfortunately, due to lack of funding, we were not funded completely. So at that time, I sent a letter to the office here at City of Glendale, and we came to the understanding that we will do phase one last year and cover the two gyms, do that one first, and then come back this year, apply for the rest of the funding for the remaining of the building. The two gyms were constructed and rehabilitated partially with funding from City of Glendale Hut. And every time it rains, right now, I'm standing here, I'm scared to death because this weekend, we're going to have rain again, and we have our D-League program with four hundred kids there, and it's going to leak. So we're going to put buckets there, and kids are going to play around it. So safety issues for the kids, and also the flooring that we have, which will, and the roofing, that's the ceiling that we have, everything is going bad. The ceiling, the, all the special kind of ceiling that we have, we have to change it anyway. Has nothing to do with this project, but all these rains have done a good damage to that. So we are going, we just recently received the contract for phase one of this roofing project. So we're going to go and do the roofing project within the next couple of months. We have to go out to bid, notice calling to bids, and get a contractor to do that. We are hoping that you will find, fund us for the second portion of this building and so that we can complete the roofing project.
Thank you. Start with some questions?
So, just so I can understand it, what you just mentioned in terms of moving forward in the next couple of months, that's using the previously designated funds?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so the additional request is to do another part of the roof or completing the, I guess, the same job?
Another part of the roof.
Okay.
So the building that we have here is a T-shaped building. The top of that is the two gyms and the entrance lobby. That's what we're going to do right now.
That's phase one?
Phase one.
Okay.
Phase two is the ones that we, is our ping pong hall, our wellness program, and the recently completed youth activity center, which was funded by your agency. And we are also hoping that all the money that we spend there, this rains won't disrupt anything. Actually, out of our own pocket, because we were concerned about this new youth activity center, we corrected part of the roof temporarily so that we are, we feel safe that nothing will happen there until we get the funding and do the whole roof. And actually, Mr. Olivares, which is a member of your committee, we were talking last time when I was here, you were all here, and I indicated that we're looking for foam roofing. And he said that that's a very good idea, and that's the direction that we are going.
And, I mean, isn't it more efficient to do the entire roof at once versus parts of the roof?
Yes, but we don't have the funding.
Okay. And then the other question, which I'm asking everyone, is if you don't get the amount you're asking for, because you're the third highest request, how is that going to impact this project?
Tremendously, because there is no way that we can do that without the complete funding of this. Now, I was looking here, the contractor, and that was one of the notes that the staff sent us, the contractor, total price was fifty thousand dollars. Our proposal is fifty-one thousand, seven hundred, because usually, it's always, we've always been told that to have ten percent contingency on each project. In his case, he didn't have the ten percent, so he rounded up to fifty thousand. We went and added the ten percent correctly and applied to the project and came down to fifty-one thousand, seven hundred.
And I should correct my statement before because it's inaccurate. This is the lowest proposal out of the five proposals. You just happen to have two proposals in for two different projects. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other, please.
Thank you. If you're funded, the total amount of fifty-one thousand, seven hundred you're requesting, or at least close to that amount, the roofing job on the buildings will be completed.
Completed. All twenty-four thousand square feet of the building that we have will be, will have new foam roof, including last year's funding, and is coming.
So you won't have any leaking issues?
We won't have any leaking. And if we do, that's on the contractor. He has to come back.
I believe there's a ten-year warranty.
We have a ten-year warranty on that proposal.
All projects are important. If there was a priority project that's before us that you presented, which is the roofing repair and the bathrooms renovation, which one would be a priority project?
You're asking if I want to, if I'm going to be dying, if I should be dying while being shot or have medicine injected to me?
That may be so, but...
The thing is that now, if we're going to the bathroom proposal, in that building, which is the thirty-three, forty...
It means just not going to, you don't want to get into that.
Mr. Tayshian, it is very difficult for me to prioritize that.
Okay. All right, that's enough. That's fine.
It's very difficult.
That's fine. Thank you.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Well, I have a number of questions.
Of course you do.
And it wouldn't be right not to ask them. The first one, in terms of your response, I thought, you know, that a couple of them, if not three of them, were non-responsive. In terms of the foam, I was kind of interested that Mr. Olivares recommended it. And I was wondering if, in fact, it's something that's acceptable when you're replacing an entire roof. But I'll take it.
Let me correct myself. Mr. Olivares didn't recommend it. When I said that, that's the direction that we're going, he said, that's a good idea.
Did he say that was the direction you're going?
I said that we are, that's the direction that we're going.
Oh.
He said that that's a good idea.
And he said it's a good idea. Okay. And then in terms of your construction schedule and your timeframe, I think that's so important, and it's missing. So that, I thought that was non-responsive. I think it's required. Then I was concerned about the eighty-six thousand that you received last year for phase one, and you said it's not completed. Can you carry over the funds?
That is not a decision that I can make. It's the decision that city staff has to make. The problem that I have is this, we can do that probably if they allow us to do that. But the problem that we have is this, the fiscal year for this proposal now starts in July. So we have to wait another four, five months. If the contracts come on a timely manner, it'll be September before we can, we are able to start the roofing project. And for that period of time, we are still going to have rains, and we're still going to have leaks and all that stuff.
Yeah, it seems to me like...
It is a good idea, actually, to combine, to do the whole thing together. But these are the issues that we have.
Yeah, but when they give you funding for phase one, and the recommendation is go ahead and do this part, but it's not done, then I'm just kind of curious why you said you...
Our roof, Commissioner Ramirez, is the three parts. Technically, and I asked the contractors that came to give us the prices, technically, we can do that because the levels are different on the roofs. We can, it's not ideal. The ideal will be to do the whole thing together, but in two phases is also ideal. We can do that.
But I think Mrs. Ramirez's question is, where are we with phase one?
I have a contract in my hand. I got it last week. I have to sign it and return it to the city so that the city manager can sign it. As soon as that contract is signed, I will go out to bid, get...
How do you go out to bid after you have a contract signed?
Contract between our agency and City of Glendale.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're anticipating some work starting soon with the construction and hopefully by September, November?
I believe, within two months or two and a half months, we will be able to start.
But you don't actually have the bids already?
No, we have to go to publish it in the newspaper.
You haven't even published yet.
No, because we didn't, I am not allowed to publish it until we get a signed contract between our agency and...
But you have one for, you have one for last year's funding.
No.
What's eighty-six, what's the eighty-six for?
Members of committee, Vice Chair, Marcarion, yeah, the contract is for two thousand thirteen, fourteen. And delay, just since you, the contract was a, we had to do a historic review. The building's over fifty years old now. So it actually went to the state of California for historic review, which is called SHPO, State Historic Preservation Office. So that was a delay of a number of months for the review. And we don't sign contracts until that environmental is cleared. But this contract is between the city and HomeNetmen. And then the next step is HomeNetmen to go out to bid for roofers and then sign a contract between HomeNetmen and the roofers. That's the next step. And they have already completed the agreements, and so we will be going out to bid very soon.
So the delay is kind of other stuff?
Outside of the city's realm and outside of the agency's realm, it was something unexpected.
So can I ask a question? We're still talking about going out to bid, but in the proposal, there was an estimate from Ari Thane Foam Inc., right?
In its proposal and...
Is that, is that just for the sake of some sort of benchmark of approximate costs? So that's, they may bid, they may not bid ultimately on the project, and it still has to go out to competitive bid. So this isn't like Ari Thane is the predetermined contractor?
Correct.
But is that fair to the contractor? Because he, what his contract says, it's a proposal acceptance, something like that.
Yeah, but it's not signed.
I know it's not signed, but it's, it's ready to be signed.
May I, may I interrupt?
Yes, please.
Usually, we are supposed to have a bid or two with our proposals. We go to contractors that we either know them, or we have worked with them in the past, or somebody recommended to us. And when they come and do the, give us an estimate, they are well aware that this is just an estimate, this is not a guarantee that you're going to get the job or whatever. And they are also well aware that when the time comes to participate in the bidding process, when they give us a new estimate, doesn't necessarily mean that that has to be the same that they did in the past or not.
Right, because a lot of time can go by.
And I did to make another correction here, Commissioner Ramirez. On my response sheet, first page, last line, it says the project will be concluded in one month.
But you haven't even got the permits. Is that from what point?
There is no permit. I also written here that all we have to do is go to the City of Glendale and get one permit. It's on over the counter to do the roofing, nothing more. And I, that is not my opinion. I have asked and checked with roofers.
And HomeNetmen is covering the cost of the permitting?
Yes, yes.
Are there other things that HomeNetmen is putting into this in addition to the funds requested?
Yes, if there is any design or permits and all that stuff. Plus, Mr. Correia knows, we had a very good volunteer, which he was in a structural business. He would do all the supervision of that as a volunteer for us. Recently, he doesn't feel very good, and he won't be able to help us, Victor. He won't be able to help us from now on. So we have to hire someone to do the supervision and all that stuff, and that has to be...
And the quality check. And I guess my question goes to staff on all of these projects, capital projects, not just HomeNetmen, but to what degree does staff monitor the competitive bidding process and the quality of work and that sort of thing? Does staff get involved in that level?
Yes, members of committee, yes, staff does get involved in the initial phase of, let's say, design. We don't go on design, but we just oversee that and assist the nonprofits, all the way to submitting building permits. And then as the city staff, project managers assisting in whatever we can, the agencies with their building process, the bidding process, which is always handled by the agencies, in this case, HomeNetmen. And then after that, it's the construction documents that are, again, reviewed by the city, the construction contracts reviewed by the city staff. And then, of course, it's HomeNetmen or the agencies would be signing those, and then, of course, overseeing some of the construction projects. So we do get involved in that.
There's oversight at various points during the process by staff?
Yes.
I had just another question. On your, the weaknesses that you did not indicate the number of unduplicated persons that you serve annually, and your response was that the new roof will not add to the number of youth we serve. I thought that was a little bit over the top. But in one, in one area, you say, you say, you serve... that the new roof will not add to the number of youth we serve. I thought that was a little bit over the top, but aren't, are you, in one, in one area, you say, you say you serve 500, and then on another page, it's 350 to 400, but are these the same?
Yeah, it's, it's based on age group. When we say somewhere, we say youngsters, and someplace we say kids. Kids, in my book, is something from four-year-old all the way to 16-year-old. We call them kids, and then the ones we call them older, youth. So the 500 will be the total number, the 350 to 400 are the kids. But let me explain something regarding my response, and I have that issue with roofing project, and I also have that issue with the bathrooms project. There are projects that HUD funds, and due to those projects, we add new programs and we add new members to our, new users to our program. Youth Activity Center, we said that we will have 300 new unduplicated people using it. But if we have a facility that already is being used, and we're trying to do something to make that area safer for the children, or the kids, or the youth, all I said there is that that doesn't add to new people. If I am repairing and remodeling, not remodeling, repairing the bathrooms, these are the bathrooms that these kids are using right now in a very unhealthy situation, and we're trying to make it healthy for them. The same kids are there. We're not bringing, just because we repaired the roof, it doesn't mean that new people are gonna come and start utilizing the project. That's all I said in my response.
Yeah, and I was just kind of following up on the requirement that there be...
This is a discussion that I have with City of Glendale, and hopefully it'll be cleared, that there are projects that due to those projects, we will have additional users, unduplicated new people. Our tutoring program brings in new people. Our Youth Activity Center brings in new people. When several years back, we rehabilitated that new building and created two new gymnasiums there, that brought a lot of new people in. But by just the same area, you like, let me give you an example. When we did the Youth Activity Center, which is about 3,000 square feet, we indicated that we will have 300 new unduplicated users there. Okay, this is an area there. Now, we are going back and say, okay, now we're going to fix the roof on top of the Youth Activity Center. The same 300 that we promised that we'll be using there are there. Just because we fixed the roof doesn't necessarily mean that we're gonna get new people there. That's the argument that we
So that, so maybe you don't, it needed clarification for me that you can be serving the same, the same, the same roof?
And if you look at my original proposal, I have not indicated anywhere that there will be new, 300 new unduplicated people. All I have said is that 300 people are using that area.
Yeah, and I don't think that HUD requires additional, you know, members just because we're changing the bathrooms or the roof. We're gonna ask clarification.
Because he knows HUD more than I do.
It's the safety. I think it's still a CDBG requirement, Mr. Carrion.
Yes, Vice Chairman Carrion, Members of the committee, yes, it's a requirement for any facility at plenty of CDBG to document the number of persons accessing that center. So regardless if they're new, they're existing, they signed a form a year ago, two years ago, six months ago, at the time, the grant funds, and if it's an annual grant, there are, and this is for all the agencies that you've seen, and they all complied, is requirement for everyone to come in to sign an applicant information form into that center using, well, it's called North Campus in this case, so all applicants, all persons coming into the center, but again, whether new or, or existing, are required to complete applicant information forms, and that's the 500 persons that are, we estimate, that would be completing the income verification forms.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion.
Okay.
Just one comment. I think it's, it's important to avoid any injuries to our children. I think it's important to keep and maintain a safe environment for our children. My, my kids played at the Ararat gyms many, many years ago, and I think that that's the number one, for me, the number one priority is safety.
It is our number one priority also, because if it rains, Mr. Ramirez, if it rains this Friday, please stop by.
Yeah, really. And I'm thinking, why didn't you do this before, before you put in these, these new gyms with these great floors? I mean, this is serious. And you're saying it's a, it's a safety issue, and you're saying on a safety issue...
Good question, and within all, we purchased the building in 2007, and since then, with our own money, not city money, with our own money, we have repaired the roof several times, location by location, location. Unfortunately, that hasn't helped us.
Okay, and then I'll go back to the one that I had mentioned before, and which was questioned, but in your, in your program description, the purpose of Home Management Glendale chapter is to promote sports among Armenian youth in the United States, to render assistance to students of Armenian parentage, to acquire an education in schools, colleges, and universities, and to assist youth of Armenian descent who have displayed proficiency in sports activities to pursue their sports activities in schools, colleges, and universities. And I think that's admirable. I, I think you have a proven track record. You also indicate that you are affiliated with the Boy Scouts of America.
Is this in my proposal? Excuse me.
It's in one of your, whatever, the whole thing here.
Page six of notes to financial statements.
And you have it in the other one as well, and I mean, last, last time you were here, I, I asked you about that, and it was, my fellow commissioners did, thought that that maybe was not the case, but it's in your own proposal, so. But, you know, that's, that's not here or there. That's, that's who you are, and you have a proven record of your effectiveness and dedication to the community, and I think that a lot of it has to do with your affiliation with the Boy Scouts. Unfortunately, the Boy Scouts is not eligible for funding.
Can I explain a few things here? Our organization, as it is right now, the Glendale Chapter of Home Management, which is a worldwide organization, it's not only the United States, it's a worldwide organization. We do what is best for our chapter in the City of Glendale. There are maybe some things that are written here in 1918 that is for Armenians back in Turkey, but right now, here in City of Glendale, we have no issue with having non-Armenians in our organization, as I told you, and I will document it for you. We have no, never rejected anybody because they are not Armenians. Regarding the Boy Scouts of America, again, out of 2,600 members that we have, probably 350 are Scouts, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. We decide on our own what we're doing and what we are not doing. Boy Scouts of America doesn't come and tell us that, oh, you are not supposed to let gays in here, or you are not supposed to let blacks here, or anything else. We are not prejudiced against any group of people, and since, and, no, I'm not gonna say this because it's bragging. We are the largest in the whole world, this Glendale chapter, and because of that, we can do whatever we want to do within a home management organization. In City of Glendale, we are well-established. We are well-aware that we cannot discriminate about, against anybody, Armenian, non-Armenian, any sexuality, or anything else. This is a very good, well-run organization with no prejudice against anybody.
Well, that's very affirming for me, because I think that when you change an organization, it's changed from within, and that you are the organization that you are. If and when the Boy Scouts change, it will be because of organizations like yours. But presently, the Boy Scouts of America...
And we don't agree with them at all.
And that's, that is so good to hear.
Mr. Gorgorion, in interest of time, let's move along. I think these are questions that were raised last meeting, and I think staff is already looking into it.
I have a right to address them.
Oh, you have more questions? Okay. Do we have time with them?
He was answering.
Which part, Mr. Ramirez?
Never mind.
No?
Thank you.
I, I just want you to, all of you, to know firsthand what Home Management Glendale Ararat chapter is. This is, we are so far bigger than any other chapter in the United States or not, so that when we decide on something, it has a value, it has a weight to that, and the mother organization, Boy Scouts of America isn't stupid enough to, to come and tell us that you have to do this and do that, because if we pull out of our 500 kids there, and I hope they don't listen to me right now, but that's the reality.
Well, I think you have the capacity and the influence to change it, and I commend you if you can do that.
We do not change anything. We do what we need to do within our own chapter, within our own organization.
Like I say, it's, I was just questioning the affiliation and the effect it could have. Thank you.
We are, we are proud that we are part of Boy Scouts of America, the Eagles Council, because due to their help, we are the organization that within the last three, four, three years has produced the largest number of Eagle Scouts here.
I agree.
Yeah, so there are good things. We take the good things, and then we decide on the rest.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, we'll move along to the next project. I think it's...
Yes, it's also by the same agency, Home Management Glendale Ararat Chapter, and this is for the bathroom renovation project.
So I believe, I have said everything, so if you have any questions, I will answer them. The organization is the same. This is for the old building at 3347. We have four, six, we have 13 bathroom areas. Each one of them has about, has two, except for one, have two bathrooms. So the situation is really bad. We applied for funding last year, but then before the interviews, since we noticed that there's a lot of applications, not enough funding, voluntarily pulled it back to make it easier for the commission, for everybody else. We thought we can't wait another year, and we waited another year, and this year we came back, and we think that we need to do that. We need to repair this, those bathrooms.
Okay, but this is a separate, different building?
This is...
This is the south, this is the south campus?
Main campus.
Is the main, so it's the same campus or not? Is the roof or...
The roof is the north campus. This is the main campus.
Thank you.
The roof is in Glendale, and this one is the Los Angeles one.
Okay.
But it's used, both are used by Glendale residents?
More than 75% of our members are people that are using the area are Glendale residents.
Okay. Do we want to start with some questions? Commissioner Tashian?
Do you want me to speak?
Yes, Mrs. Ramirez?
Please, go ahead.
Well, let's see where I can start. I'll forego all that other stuff. I was wondering, you, you pointed out, and it's kind of disturbing, that you're approaching slum conditions, and it's an unhealthy environment?
Yes, it is unhealthy environment right now. Some, some of the bathrooms really need repair, and the others, they are the same thing.
Well, I, I think that you probably, if you're, you cannot have a healthy environment with kids in there, and we give you funds because we want to eliminate slump conditions.
And that's why we applied for it.
But you've been in, how long have you been in there?
Since 1996, 97.
Quite a while, yeah. Well, that's, that's a concern I had, why, why it took so long to get this, and given your experience...
It wasn't like, it wasn't like this to begin with. It's got like this little by little.
Yeah. Well, from your pictures, and, you know, I don't know how much funding you're gonna get, but from your pictures, if you hire one of them, one of them outfits that comes in with their power sprayers, because it looks like it's all tile, I'm not sure, I didn't get, did you, any of you?
I think it's tiled.
Yeah. Did you see the bathrooms?
I haven't really checked out.
Did you, were, were you able to see the bathrooms? But...
I, I haven't seen the bathrooms in, I'd say about a year or so, but I'm familiar with, with the, with this building. Like I said, my, my kids played for, you know, at that facility, well, for shots specifically, but, so I'm, I'm aware that, that some of the bathrooms need repair.
And I'm not sure on this one picture if that's mold, but that's serious if it's mold.
I will have to find out. I don't know.
Yeah. See, and since you're not in, since you're not in Glendale, we can't have an inspector go over there, although maybe, I don't know. That, that concerns me, and that you can't allow these, you can't run a facility and allow these conditions to exist. And also, if I'm looking through your financials, you have lumped your maintenance, your, your insurance, and repairs on one line, so you have no breakdown for maintenance, and maintenance is critical in these facilities.
We have breakdowns on all of them, Ms. Ramirez, except for then when we go to our annual meeting and we present it there, we bring it down, we combine some line items together, because then it will be a big paper like that. So at the meeting, if anybody has any questions, and they want a detailed, detail of those line items, we are there, we are ready, and we can provide it for them.
So you think you have enough set aside for maintenance for, to take care of these bathrooms?
What is the number there, Ms. Ramirez, for that three line items together?
I don't have it in front of me.
Because usually, we spend about 30 to 35,000, if I'm not wrong, about that area on maintenance each year.
Yeah, but see, on my line, it says that much, it includes insurance and something else on there. Utilities included. Utilities, building maintenance, and insurance on the same line, it's, you know, it's, it's, I can't tell because of the insurance, and you have all kinds of insurance.
If, if it is a requirement for you to know that, I can send you a detailed...
Oh, no, it's not, not, not for me. I'm just here to ask the questions.
Because we do have a detailed one, and we send it also out. But this is something that we always give an inch here to, for these purposes, and that's what we continue to do.
Yeah, okay.
Well, are you referring to the, the budget for the bathroom renovations? Are you referring to something else?
Oh, no, 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 I'm, I'm...
Existing.
Their statement.
You're referring, okay, got it. All right. I just want to go back to where you were at.
And, well, I think that, that pretty much covers it for me, but I think a good, a good cleaning would help this bathroom a lot. Looks to me like this one's got new plumbing, new, new plumbing fixtures, but the, the tile is in horrible condition, but it might be just the photo, but it's...
Oh, it's hard to tell from the photos?
Yeah, it's hard to tell from the photos, but that other one that looks like mold, it's, I hope it's not. I hope it's the photos. But you yourself said that it's, it's an unhealthy condition, and it's a slum, and so, and, you know, and not, you, of course you're wanting assistance with it, but it should never get to that point.
It got to the point little by little, Ms. Ramirez.
And this is a...
It wasn't like that all this time. So it gets to a point that we decide that, hey, we can't keep on doing it.
If it's, yeah, yeah, you can't neglect it.
We, we're not trying to.
So you came forward for the funding last year, and it was not granted, and...
No, it, no, no, I pulled it back before the interviews.
Okay.
Because you applied for the roof funding, you prioritized the roof?
There wasn't enough. This year, I think you have 300,000. Last year, it wasn't that much. It was much less than that, and I noticed that I am applying 135,000 for the roofing, so let me pull this back, so that I'll be sure that at least I'll get that, which didn't work out. I didn't get that total amount, so this year we put it back.
Another thing, you, you are a membership organization, right?
No, both ways. It doesn't necessarily have to be a member. You have some members, and there are programs that there are not members.
Like in your scouting program, how do you fund the dues for the Boy Scouts or the Girl Scouts?
Mrs. Ramirez, every single person that comes to our organization wants to become a member. If that person is able to pay the membership fee, we get the membership fee. We have programs in the organization that you don't have to be a member. Our D-League program, which has about 1,200 people that are using that, at the north campus where we want to put the roof there, our wellness program, our mountaineering program, our different basketball leagues that we participate with different people, they are not members, and they're not required to be members.
So your 2,600 members are...
In addition to those 2,600 members, we have... In addition to those 2,600 members, we have 1,200 in the D League, and we have people in our wellness programs that are not members at all.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Ramirez, do you have any?
No, I mean, I think, I think Mr. Tashian covered this, but we were asking you before in terms of prioritization, and it was difficult for you to prioritize, but I guess let me ask you the question in a slightly different way, which is, if you didn't get the full amount, which is the way I've been asking the question of every applicant, if you don't get the full amount requested for this project, and only get a partial amount, will Home and Land be able to kick in the rest to actually get, get the job done, or what will the impact be?
I am not sure if we can kick in, because it's very difficult for us, it's really difficult. But what I would suggest is that if I don't, if we don't get 100% funding, because the bathrooms are separate areas, we have to do as many as possible. The worst-case scenarios, go and attack them, and then see what happens.
So with whatever you get, you might prioritize and phase the projects?
But as was Ms. Ramirez's concern, it's as long we have to fix it, so maybe we have to get the whole amount, I don't know, if...
Not maybe, you do.
Yeah, if any.
Thank you.
Well, both, both projects are important, as you know, and we'll try and fund as much as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very much, Reverend. Take a moment, and let's fill out the forms. All right, next item, please.
Next on the schedule was a public comment, I haven't received any cards for comments in this, on this item, and so after that, we have a break scheduled for 10 minutes, if you'd like. Otherwise, next would be discussion and development of recommendations for capital improvements.
I'm going to ask my colleagues, would we...
If I could use a restroom break.
Okay, let's come back in 10 minutes.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll continue our CDBG Advisory Committee meeting of February 24th, and we will, we will start with the recommendation and the, and the process for the capital improvement request fundings. At this time, I would like to recommend my committee members to proceed with the proposal for Glendale Adventist Medical Center, and for the potential conflict. Since I am employed by Glendale Adventist, I would like to recuse myself and pass the gavel to my fellow commissioner, Mr. Tashian, for deliberation and the process of Glendale Adventist Medical Center's request at this time.
Thank you.
I lost my spreadsheet, but it's going to go up there, right?
Yes, it will.
Too big.
Are we waiting for the spreadsheet, or should we just continue?
You can proceed, I'm about to project it now. There you go.
Thank you. All right, let's discuss proposal number two, which is the proposal from Glendale Adventist Medical Center, and that is the ADA upgrades to the two bathrooms, specifically the bathroom upstairs, and also the bathroom downstairs. They're asking for $93,120, which represents 50% of the total construction costs of $186,241. Let's start deliberations, anyone have any comments about this proposal?
So maybe I'll start, could we dim the lights a little bit, too, just like we did last, on Friday?
Certainly.
Just to help. So a broader, well, the blue area right now is the city programs, which we don't decide on, that's already pre-designated.
We're at, we're at, we're at number two, I believe.
Two, yeah. So I wanted to make a broad comment, like I did on Friday, in terms of a general approach, before I comment specifically about Glendale Adventist, which is, clearly, there are not enough funds to go around for all these projects, so one approach is to go in and try and do the best that we could to partially fund each of them. The other approach is to say, well, we're going to prioritize these five, and perhaps not fund one or two of them in order to fully fund the rest of them, just stating that just as a, you know, a couple of different options in terms of approach. Specifically, with regard to Glendale Adventist, as I said in my previous comments, I have no doubt about the contribution of this center to the community. I also have no doubt about the good work that Glendale Adventist does in the community. When I do compare all these different organizations in terms of their programs, I do draw a distinction between those organizations that are nonprofit in the sense of limited budgets, and those organizations that do have deeper pockets, and, and in this case, with Glendale Adventist, there are deeper pockets that could help fund these, this program, particularly when it comes to ADA compliance. I'm a bit, I'm a bit troubled as to why they need to come to CDBG for ADA-type requirements, because they do this in their business every day, any sort of facility that they would run, in any sort of hospital facility, the first thing they would want to be is compliant with ADA, which would not be necessarily waiting around for CDBG funds to, you know, in order to make it ADA compliant, that's just part of the law, federal law, and it's part of what they do in their core business. Having said that, like I said, I don't doubt the importance of this facility, and, and I'm sure they're going to be, as, as the gentleman stated, you know, they'll be putting in some of their own funds into this program, and I think any shortfall in this program, I think, you know, they would find a way to be ADA compliant, it's not an option, you have to be compliant with the federal law. So when I compare this one compared to the other ones that have less access to finances, I kind of would, I would try and counterbalance those two issues, which is who has access to funds that could close the gap, and who might have more difficulty raising those funds. So for example, you know, Door of Hope, et cetera, some of these other ones are, are more dependent on our funds versus Glendale Adventist. That doesn't diminish what Glendale Adventist is doing, it doesn't diminish in any way my personal appreciation for what they're trying to do here, it's just we're forced to do some forced prioritization here, and some forced ranking in order to get to 300,000, so if we do any funding, like I said, it would be, I would recommend a lot less than what they're requesting, and I would also consider whether or not we should fund this if, depending on where we go with the others, because again, they're all substantial sums that add up to quite a bit more than we have to work with here, it's just the reality we're dealing with.
Understood. Commissioner Ramirez, what are your thoughts?
That is, we don't have any money, right? I, I agree with you on the whole premise of the, their mission, their service, their work in the community, you can't negate that and diminish it, but I agree that this, that should be FDA compliant from the get-go, and it, that should, that condition should have been met, although if it's an existing facility, some kind, sometimes they, they allow you, you know, to wait until, until you do the next renovation, or rehab, or whatever, so they may be coming from that point of view. I still have a concern with their lawsuit, and, and that's very troubling to me, especially since it's kind of connected, or attempted to be connected to the city, so I would say that, although I would like to fund them, at this point, I might not support any funding for them.
And I'm, I, pardon me, but I'm not familiar with the lawsuit, and I did not read up on that part of it, can someone give me a factual, some of the facts surrounding it? I don't think it should affect this decision, but...
Your desk line.
Commissioners, to be honest, I don't think we should be discussing the, the lawsuit in, in my opinion, as it relates to the application for CDBG funds for this community center project, they're, they're two separate issues.
It's not connected to this, I, okay.
I don't think we should be discussing that.
I'm satisfied with that.
Well, the organization is, is, has been sued for discrimination, so that's where I'm at.
But not having to do with this facility?
Of course not, I'm talking about the organization.
And usage of this facility is not affect, not in, part of that discrimination lawsuit?
Yes, and it, it's, it's an ongoing suit, and so it's, there's an allegation, I don't think it would be fair to say that they are being sued for discrimination, or they aren't.
They are being sued, he said so.
But not for this facility, right?
But, but we can't infer that, that they discriminate, and, and, and that's, and that's...
In fact, you can.
That's the way you made it sound.
That they discriminate, until it's shown that they don't.
We, we can't discuss it.
Well, anyway, that's, that's kind of the way I see it, so I hope that's okay.
Look, Commissioner, I guess you made your point, you know, you don't want any funding going towards this project.
Yeah, but, you know, you guys can...
What, what do you think? What do you think about funding? It's either going to be, we're going to completely eliminate them, or we're going to give them some type of funding.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we could do the following, just to move our, move the ball a little bit up the field here, which is what we did on Friday, you know, Glendale Healthy Kids, very worthwhile program, we said, though, we put it on kind of a contingency to see where the rest of it shakes out, and so we put zero down to start with, with Glendale Healthy Kids, and then at the end of the process, we said if there are additional funds that come available, we put a contingency that those funds would go to Glendale Healthy Kids. One approach might be, just to, again, move this discussion forward, where you could put zero down on Glendale Adventist, and then see where we net out at the end, or we come in clearly at a reduced level than what they're asking for, because that's really no choice, that we, we don't have a choice in that matter.
Is there any comments from staff, Jess, do you have any comments on this?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Tashian, I was, I was talking to Mr. Creby about something else.
Okay, all right, I think we're coming to consensus right now, is that we should put zero funding at this time, and go forward with the rest of the process, and see what happens when we deliberate and make decisions with the other proposals. Could we do that, Iris, could we put zero funding at this time?
Yes, the, the line there signifies a zero, that zero funding.
Well, I can't see that far, so...
It's a little dash on the right-hand column under number two, and again, that's just a placeholder for now, like we did on Friday, and then let's see, we come up with 300,000.
And, and that's a placeholder for this session, right?
Yeah, well, we'll come back at the end of this session, see how we, how we net out, I think, and at that time, Commissioner Mark Carrion will have to recuse herself if we come back and start having additional discussions to change these numbers, but this is just so we can move the discussion forward.
Okay, so that's done, let's go to the next proposal, and before I go to the next proposal, I'll invite Vice Chair Mark Carrion back, and turn over the gavel to her.
Let's continue with the next, oh, we're actually evaluating.
So just to summarize where we're at, we decided to put a placeholder of zero at this time, kind of like we did with Glendale Healthy Kids on Friday, and then we'll come back at the end of the process to reevaluate where we are with the, with the funds, so it's not a final decision yet, it's just to move the discussion forward.
All right, so are we proceeding with the next agency?
Go back to the top, we haven't done YMCA yet.
Which would be YMCA.
YMCA, okay. And they're asking, they're requesting 152, and we funded 50,000 last year.
And if I could ask a question of staff, of the 50, just to refresh my memory, because we went through so many proposals, so the 50,000 allocated last year, was that actually spent yet, or no?
No, the funds have not been spent, they're part of that Phase One.
Similar to Home and Land Men, it's kind of like they've held on to that amount until... So it would be the 100, what they're really doing is 152 plus the 50 from last year, is what they would be spending?
Correct.
In theory.
With additional funding from the YMCA, stay indicated would be 100,000, so it's a $325,000 project, and we've already provided them 50,000, that's unexpended, and they're asking for 152.
Yeah.
Well, I think, you know, as well...
And then they've, they've noted in their response as well, which is, because of the, the lease on the other property, that the Board of Directors can allocate another $100,000 from the proceeds.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Do we want to put a 50,000 placeholder, or is it 52 for now?
I think if we use Friday's approach, we can go back to last year's funding.
I like the 50.
Yeah.
I like putting down just giving them the 50.
I think for now, it's, Commissioner Tashian, I don't know how you feel.
I, I think, I think all of us like this program, and I think we need to go forward and, and provide additional funding, and I think in the $50,000 range, it's appropriate at this time.
Okay. So the next project is Door of Hope, that's the plumbing for eight additional units. I think we allocated some funds last year, which was for their first base, I think it was seven, seven units, and then they're coming back with additional eight units for this year.
Yeah, so 116,000 approved last year, and then additional 269 approximately requested this year.
I'd like to see them get 116,000.
168?
116, whatever it was last year.
That was last year's funding.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that we're going to have that much, but maybe we can come up with a round figure as a suggestion, again, we'll come back to playing with the numbers. I, I just don't know how we're going to fund on that level without cutting someone specifically out, I mean, we've already zeroed out, for the sake of discussion at least, we've already zeroed out Glendale Adventist, but if you, if we come in at 100 on this one, then we will probably be in a position of zeroing out, or greatly reducing others as well.
I want to start with maybe an 80,000 as a placeholder, just for now.
I think that's more realistic, I'd like to support this program. I did want to say one other thing, just to, I want to make sure also people understood my line of questioning, I think for future reference, I would really recommend on these sorts of proposals, when there are two entities, that there be enough treatment and explanation of what the other entity is in the proposal itself, for the sake of full transparency and understanding of everyone, because I thought the mention of Verdugo Housing Corporation was very tangential in the proposal, and I think it's important for the sake of transparency, I certainly learned a lot from the presentation, asking questions, so I think whenever there's a double entity type of situation, that the proposals...
Yes, and that was my first question when I, when I started a few years ago, and presented, that was actually my question, one of my questions.
You know, rather than me going around and digging, you know, I think it would be helpful for commissioners, and certainly for the public that may want to look into these records, to make it very clear, so that you don't leave any room for doubt, in which, and in this case, I might, the doubts are cleared up, or my questions, I should say, are cleared up, I think it's good for the record to have that sort of transparency. So again, I mean, I think the program's great, but let's maybe start with 80, and then let's see where we get with the others, and then maybe we can come back and revisit if my fellow commissioners agree.
Commissioner Ramirez and Tashian?
I think, I was looking more towards 100 than 80, but I could...
Me, too.
Okay.
But we're still placeholding, right?
Yes. Yes.
Right, yeah, okay. So let's do that, let's do a placeholder in the amount of 80, but I'd like to revisit that and increase it by at least 20,000. I'll put a question mark next to Door of Hope and 80,000.
Okay, next project is Home and Amen with the roof installation, the new roof for their north campus. They're asking for 86, I'm sorry, they're asking for 51,700, and I think the 1,700 was the 10% contingency, which they said they may not need.
Right, that they would cover.
They would cover, so...
This is to supplement the 86,000 approved last year, so this is similar to the previous proposal that we looked at, which is to supplement, supplement funds from previous designation.
So if they're going to be taking care of the contingency, we're looking at a $47,000 basically request, and that will...
105, yeah.
About 47,000. So that will basically take care of all their roofing needs, repair everything that's in, on both facilities, and...
But I thought the contractor, the proposal was 50.
Yeah, but I think they, in back and forth with staff responses, it was because they added to the, no, the contract was for less, but they added more. They asked for more, and when staff questioned them, they said it was that 4700.
But the contract is, it's not a proposal.
Well, it's not even a contract.
Right, the proposal.
It's 50,000.
Yeah, it's one, it's one bid at this point, so who knows what, what situation come in at. I mean, I was going to recommend maybe we just, again, as a placeholder, put in 50, and then we can come and adjust up and down based on where we might go.
I would, I would recommend that the 50,000, I'd like to have this project completed, fully completed, and I think 50,000 is a ballpark figure that should complete the project.
Okay.
So I'd like, unless there's any other further comments.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
The next, again, same, Home and Amen are at their south campus bathroom renovation, or is it bathroom renovation?
I think that that stuff should have already been done, and it should be done with, with their own funds. I mean, if you can afford to buy another building, you should certainly afford to maintain your own building, and I recommend no funding for that one.
But they said they have different parts, they have different bathrooms, that they can phase it.
Yeah.
Renovating maybe one, two, and then going to the...
He said slum conditions.
Yeah.
Unhealthy, he said.
We put a 25,000 placeholder. I mean, to me, I think at least they can start with some of the project, and then maybe we'll encourage them to do some fundraising and complete the project. We do definitely want to see this project completed for the safety reasons, and I would really like to see the entire project completed if we were to, you know, provide some support, and then they would complete the project based on some fundraisings or additional funding that they can raise.
Yeah, and I agree with Vice Chair Markarian. I'm not sure that I, I would, I don't agree with zeroing it out, but maybe as we fiddle with the numbers here, we could at least fund them on a phase.
If you zero it out, what do we have?
I would, I would concur. I would give them some funding. Certainly, I don't, I don't think we could afford to give them 100% of the funding, but...
But they said they need 100%.
Well, they could phase it in, like most of the other projects are doing.
But that's how it's come to be neglected.
Well, I believe what they said is they needed 100% for the roofing, because they really want to get that done. When I, when I pressed Mr. Gorgorian, he said that if, if push came to shove, they could phase the bathroom project.
And they're getting 100%.
What's your understanding? I thought they both said they need 100%.
No, no, I mean, they need 100% to complete the entire. I think there were a few bathrooms in different areas, maybe just to do this one location or one set of bathrooms and move to...
You can't have just one bathroom.
No, no, sets of bathrooms throughout the campus. All right, so what do we have next?
Did we add a 25,000 to the Home and Amen bathrooms?
Yes, I did. With these preliminary numbers, you still have $95,000 available.
Okay, remember, that's partially because we, we didn't put anything down for Glendale Adventist yet, and we've substantially...
Now, before we go back, do we want to add anything to the Hope, Door of Hope's? I know that Commissioner Ramirez and Tashin were...
I would request, yes, thank you, Vice Chair, thank you very much. I would request to add additional 20,000 to Door of Hope and round them off at 100,000. I had mentioned that this comes close to home to me, being a commissioner on the commissioner status of woman and dealing with domestic violence, I think this is important, like every other project is important, but I think rounding it off to 100,000 is something that I would request and advise. Commissioner Ramirez?
Well, I would like them to have 120,000. They're asking for 268.
Yeah, but they're also the highest. I would support, for now, I would support 100.
Yeah, me too.
Let's see where we go with the rest of the discussion, because we've substantially underfunded the Y at this point, so maybe if we could look at the Y as well.
Do we have 75,000 remaining, Iris?
That is correct.
Any, any thoughts on, on the Y? Commissioner Ramirez would...
If we take them to 75, it would be at half the amount that they're, less than half the amount that they're requesting, but that would be another 25. But again, just want to keep it at the front of our minds that the reason we have the 75 to play with is because we haven't put anything down for Glendale Adventist.
What's, what's the minute, well, see, we're good, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Madam Vice Chair, members of the commission, Mr. Creo and I were looking at, at the latest status report on the funds available, and what we failed to report at the beginning of today's meeting, which we, we should have, is that we actually have an extra $30,000 that came in very recently as program income, and that program income, I mentioned earlier that the only funding category where we can recycle reprogrammed funds is the capital improvement funding category. So we feel comfortable that we can go ahead and program that $30,000 that came in as program income into the 1415 allocation for capital improvement projects.
So total available would be 330,000.
Correct.
Okay, that helps.
That helps a lot.
Always like that kind of news, you know.
Yes.
You guys want to keep conferring and coming up with more?
Just information, it's actually a very recent development. The city's doing its mid-year adjustments, and usually sometimes for city adjustments is the opposite. This year, we did get a check from a housing loan that was, you know, 10, 12 years ago, so it's, it's helpful.
So I would, with that, I would recommend that we, again, as we progress this, this discussion, that we, that we raise the Y up to 75, that would be, get them to closer to 50% of their request.
And if we do that, what's, what's the balance remaining? Increase the Y to 75,000?
80,000 left. That's correct.
Well, if we're going to, yeah, I think with the Home and Amen, their circumstances are dire, and so if you're agreeing to fund that, we probably maybe could revisit Glendale Adventist.
You're talking about the bathroom project?
Yeah.
For Home and Amen and Glendale Adventist? So if we were to fund the bathroom project, which I think is 57...
I just need to make one comment. If you were going to discuss Glendale Adventist, I'm going to recuse myself from making any comments and refrain from questioning, just want to have that in the record.
Well, yeah.
Due to potential conflict of interest, so please feel free to...
So you don't have to leave.
I don't have to leave, but I just, I can't make any comments on that project, so...
I appreciate that, Vice Chair Markarian. So my first comment having to do with Home and Amen, which you can participate in, if we were to fund that to 50, not the full 57, but to 50, that would take 25 out, and then you would still have 55 left in the difference, right?
And this is correct, and this is where we need to, I believe, discuss Glendale Adventist and fund them, obviously something much less than the 93120 they're asking for. You know, I certainly would think it's an important project, and even though I know that it's Glendale Adventist and there are deep pockets there, I think that we need to do some type of funding for them, and I would initially start off with a, with a recommendation of 50,000 and open it up for discussion. And this is where you recuse yourself.
Why she's silent? Yeah, we could do 50, if, again, I think if we could plug in some numbers, just so we see...
If we could plug in 50 for that, I'm sorry.
Before, yeah, we do need, you're discussing Glendale Adventist, so we just have to be clear.
So let's, let's do this before Vice Chair Markarian leaves.
Oh, are you going to be...
Does she have to leave the room?
No, she can stay.
Well, she doesn't understand this motion, no?
No, no, she can stay.
I'm sorry, my apologies.
That's okay.
I got confused here. So again, I'm not suggesting that these numbers stick, I just want to see it up on the board.
And the 50,000 was...
If we put 50 at Glendale Adventist...
Glendale Adventist.
That leaves 30.
It leaves what?
30, 30,000.
If we were to take 25, put it towards the bathrooms, to at least get them to 50, then that would leave us five more to add to one of the others. Again, that's one approach.
Are you getting them, getting them back to 50, the bathrooms?
Yeah, based on what you were saying.
Oh, the only thing I have about that is, that's kind of a maintenance issue that's been neglected to this point, and if you're giving them pretty much what they asked, didn't they ask for 50,000?
They asked for 57.
57, well, yeah, 50. But it's kind of not equitable, what you're doing with the rest of them, but it is, you know, I personally would see that one at zero and have them finish the roofing, if you're going to go that route.
I think we gave them funding for the roofing already.
But not enough to put it all together, is it?
Maybe we can add 10 to make that at 35 and see what happens. Do you want to not go all the way to 50 and just to...
Yeah, that's reasonable, reasonable.
Yeah, not to fund both.
I mean, yeah.
Gives us 20. So we have an extra 20.
The one we are furthest away from in terms of percentage of, I mean, the largest request is Door of Hope, but that's also the one with the...
And that's also of what's up there, that's the one with the, in my opinion, the greatest need.
Well, you know, if we have 20,000, we could increase Door of Hope to 120,000, which is what you were initially talking about, Commissioner Ramirez.
And then we're comfortable with Y, 75?
I wish we could fund them more.
Certainly, but, so if we add 120,000 to Door of Hope, we should be balanced out at 330.
That's correct.
And I'm still concerned about, and I think that this isn't, it's just a comment on my part, but I think that I am still concerned about the, the relationship with the funding for, that goes to any organization that's affiliated with the Boy Scouts, unfortunately. I think Home and Amen is the organization to make that change, but if the Boy Scouts aren't eligible for federal funding, I have a concern that there may be a line there that we're crossing.
I mean, I agree with your concerns, but I think before it comes to us, this is something that needs to be, you know, or it has been already resolved, that's how I would feel.
Yeah, and it hasn't been resolved for me, especially in line of all the, the discussions that went along with the Boy Scouts this past summer, and their decisions, and some of, some of the troops, in fact, did pull out, but they pulled out because they admitted boys, but they still exclude leaders and employees. So it's an exclusive organization.
We're in the process of providing some kind of...
And that's for the City Council ultimately to make that decision, so we just...
Yeah, I don't think this is the forum to discuss that, that's kind of my understanding.
Madam Chair, we will provide a copy of the agreement that's executed between the Home and Amen Local Chapter and the City of Glendale, which is their funding agreement, which lays out all the terms and conditions, including all of the anti-discrimination clauses, which they are held accountable and are liable for, and heretofore, that's, that's been sufficient for the City of Glendale as it relates to Glendale's federal CDBG funds. We will ask for a, a copy of their organizational structure, both local and whatever national affiliations they have with the Boy Scouts and to the degree...
You will ask for that?
Yes, we will, and to the degree that we can get, or, or find specific federal rules and regulations that pertain to the eligibility of these types of organizations, we'll, we'll try to obtain that as well and, and forward that to you, to you all. But we have, we have been funding Home and Amen for probably 20 years. The program has, has been monitored probably 20 times by HUD, including a review of their organizational structure and their operations, and it's never been an issue with HUD.
It's a proven organization, no doubt about that.
Yeah.
All right, so what do we have, 20,000? Do we want to add that to item, I mean, to Door of Hope for now?
Door of Hope should be 120,000.
Okay.
I believe now we're balanced at 330.
So the entire project for Door of Hope was 400 something, that was the 100% needed to renovate the bathrooms, and with 116 allocated last year and 120 this year, so we're basically funding half of the projects, I'm really hoping to see this project moving forward, because it's very important, and we would like to see the progress on the project hopefully next year, and I know Mr. Tims here, so, thank you for everything you do. Any other comments on the programs that we have in front of us?
No, I don't have any further comments.
I think, I think there's, at this point, there's not much you can do without, you know, reducing from another, and this is just what we've got to work with, and we're actually fortunate for the extra 30 that staff alerted us to, that gave us the opportunity to get to this point.
That was a nice...
I know phased projects will add to the cost, there's no way around that, but hopefully through additional kind of outside sources of fundraising, they might be able to close that gap.
All right, so do we want to have a motion, or...
I think we have to have two different motions.
We have to have two separate motions.
Two separate motions? All right, please.
So let me, let me make, first make the, the motion for Glendale Adventist that you would recuse yourself for. So I'd like to make a motion to recommend 50,000 in 2014, 2015 funding for the Center for Mission and Community Development by Glendale Adventist.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay. Mr. Creo?
You know, I apologize, I probably should have brought this up. I just want to get clear direction from the committee on Glendale Adventist Medical Center, because I think we were talking about the first and second floor, so again, it was staff's concern, questions on the proposal analysis, that the upstairs be the priority, since that's the senior services. I'm not sure that staff is able to, to mention that as far as recommendations.
So let me modify my, my motion then.
Yeah, that was my understanding.
I would like to make a motion to allocate, recommend 50,000 for the Center for Mission and Community Development, Glendale Adventist, for the upstairs bathroom that serves the senior population.
And I believe that was the understanding, and I received that, that was a priority, so I will second that motion.
And I'll take roll call. Committee members, Armenian?
Yes.
Markarian?
I recuse myself.
Olivares is absent. Tashin?
Yes.
And Ramirez?
Yes.
All right, so do we have a motion for the next?
So I'll make a motion for the remainder of the projects, and I'll just, shall I list them just for the record?
Do you want me to read them out?
Yes, please.
Glendale YMCA ADA rehabilitation... Glendale YMCA ADA Rehabilitation Access Project, YMCA of Glendale, 75,000. Plumbing Rehabilitation Project Phase 2, Door of Hope, 120,000. Installation of New Roof, Phase 2, Home and Amen Glendale Auto dot Chapter, 50,000. Bathrooms renovation, Home and Amen Glendale Auto dot Chapter, 35,000.
So that's my, my motion is to approve those recommended funding levels as read into the record.
And I'll second that motion.
I'll take roll call.
And I have kind of a reservation, but since we have three votes, there's no point in me voting no.
Committee members, Armenian?
Yes.
Markarian?
Yes.
Olivares is absent, Tashin?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
All right, next item, please.
Next item is Item 5, Committee Staff Comments.
Any comments, fellow commissioners, or staff, please?
Yes, Vice Chair Markarian, I'm Markarian, and members of the committee, I just want to again remind the committee about the next steps, which would be the publication of the recommendations by the City BG Advisory Committee for Public Comment, which will occur on February, I'm sorry, March, approximately March the 5th, followed by a public hearing on March 20th, 7:00 PM. We intend that probably at Pacific Community Center, and followed by the City Council review of, of the recommendations by the City BG Advisory Committee on Tuesday, April 15th, at the City Council Housing Authority Meeting. These are all, we hope to keep to schedule, but these are kind of tentative dates right now. Our changes, we will let the committee know.
Okay. The 5th, 20th, and then April 15th are those three, three days that we can appear.
And I assume that Vice Chair Markarian, you'll represent us if there are questions, if you're able to attend.
Assuming, well, I'll try my very best, but if Chair Olivares is present, do I still need to make the appearance, or would it be him? Or you recommend both of us to be...
Are you referring to the City Council meeting?
I'm sorry? Yes.
Yeah, it's advisable to have the, the chair and as many, as many committee members that are available. I think, I think the council appreciates that, and helps, helps for show strength.
Great.
Do we have, what times of the day those meetings will be at?
It's, it's a joint City Council Housing Authority meeting, so it's at 3:00 in the afternoon.
What about the public hearing?
Public hearing is at 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
And that's usually at Pacific Community Center? Okay. All right, if there's any other comments?
My only comment is, I wanted to, again, thank my fellow commissioners, appreciate your indulging me in any questions I had as a first time on this, and thank staff for all the prep work, it really is helpful, and getting your arms around so much information. I look forward to continuing to monitor these projects, and I certainly, one, apologize, I guess, to the extent that I have any control over it to our organizations, because we couldn't fund them for the important work that they do, but hopefully they understand we did the best with what we have.
And I also would like to make just a few comments. I'd like to thank my colleagues. It's been great working with you the last couple of days, and I'd like to thank the staff, and I'd like to thank Iris personally. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, everyone. You guys did a great job, and thank you, staff, everyone, Iris, Jess, and Moses, for always providing us the information and guiding us through all these questions that arises during the commission, commission meeting. After any...
I just want to thank you as well, and I look forward to that additional information.
Great. Thank you, and meeting is adjourned.